We've skipped one, so let's go to the final.
Are you gonna still be reading?
No.
I'll go at the end.
I will go at the end.
I'll be gone. Mr. Chairman, I have to leave at 3:45.
Well, good luck.
Doctor's appointment.
Stay seated.
Me too.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call back to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission meeting of May 18th, 2021. A reminder for everyone present, please silence all your electronic devices and mute your microphones. All right. At this time, we have two public hearing items are being continued. We have an addendum with published public hearing item, which is not, it's been moved to. Okay. Now, we will proceed with public hearings agenda, starting with ordinances.
We have no ordinances.
Have no ordinances today. Not this year. Okay. Looks like I'm missing a sheet.
Let's get Mr. Stifler to let her read the rules here.
There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the Board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this Board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's Land Development Code.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can you let him adjust the microphones?
Uh, go ahead.
Here. None of these weren't working. Yours wasn't working.
Yours not working?
It's on, but it was just not. Not even turned up.
Not being muted.
They can't all hear back there.
Okay. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you swear those in that may give testimony today on any item coming forth?
Yes, sir. You are here to speak on any of matters coming before the Board and the public hearings. Please stand and raise your right hand.
No, you just had to stand and raise your hand.
Stand and raise your right hand. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yeah.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you. All right, we have ten public hearing items on the consent agenda. There are two items for continuous and two items that are being charged to continuous and addendum item that added for continuous. These items will be approved with one vote without a presentation unless there is someone in objection of the items. So we start with P. Right here.
Forty-nine.
P forty-nine.
Item P forty-nine was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 10th, 2021.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Item P forty-nine is a zoning amendment in the name of Steven Siller Tunnel to Tower Parkway Boulevard, which is a change in zoning from PUD Plan Unit of Development to a R4 High Density Residential District. There's a request for continuance on this item.
Move to continue.
Second.
Got a motion and second to continue. Time certain, please. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. P fifty.
Terry, would you, on future ones, would you announce when you're continuing it to?
For that date?
Yes, I don't have it for P forty-nine or P fifty yet, right here.
Your agenda memo says for forty-nine, it was June, the June 8th, 2021 meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
And P fifty is for 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
June twenty-two.
Yeah, on June 22nd.
No, I'm sorry.
Was that right?
Chairman, what P fifty says is continue to a date uncertain.
Oh, date uncertain, okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have proof, if you'd like, on item P fifty.
Yes.
Item P fifty was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 14th, 2021.
Item P fifty is a Mining Operating Permit and Conditional Use Amendment Request, Coastal Landfill Disposal Florida LLC. It's a mining operating permit and conditional use permit amendment for an existing mining and construction demolition to be disposal facility, which is being requested for a continuance to a date uncertain.
Move to continue.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. Now, we start the consent items with P fifty-one.
Item. Thank you, sir. Item P fifty-one was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 24th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to that, Terry, don't you have additional continuance items that you want to take up?
Yes, there's item P ninety-four, which was posted as a request for a continuance as well. And then there are two additional items on the agenda, P sixty-three, I believe, and P sixty-four.
I'm thinking about individually or together? Individually.
P sixty-two and P sixty-three.
Oh, P sixty-two, P sixty-three, yes.
Okay. CPV is P sixty-two, sixty-three is the Ridge Road. Those are the two comm plan submittals. You're continuing both of those, correct?
Correct.
So, P. P sixty-one is the first one?
P sixty-two and sixty-three.
P ninety-four was every time.
Okay, yeah. P sixty-two. We'll take that one up now. We got Robert Schneit.
Yes, I do. The P sixty-two was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 17th, 2021.
P sixty-two is a Conference of Plan Amendment, CPAL 2014, Central Pasco Employment Village. It is the transmittal of the proposed Conference of Plan Text Amendment to the Central Pasco Employment Village Subarea Policies. The request is to continue the transmittal hearing to the June 8th BCC meeting at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Next, P sixty-three.
Item P sixty-three was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 7th, 2021.
Item P sixty-three is a large scale Conference of Plan Amendment in the name of CPAL 2015 Ridge Road. It's the transmittal of the large scale Conference of Plan Amendment to the future land use map, two dash fifteen and Sheet twenty, changing from res one and PD on approximately twenty point, changing from res one to PD on approximately twenty point three-five acres. This is requested a continuance to June 22, 2021, at 1:30 PM here in Newport Ritchie.
Continue to June 22nd, time certain.
Second.
Date certain.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. Let's go to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Just for the folks, there's a lot of folks in the audience. There's a lot of folks that are standing, sitting outside that were here to listen to P sixty-three. I just want to make sure they do know that has been continued to now June, let's say, 22nd?
Yes.
Yeah. So that item was continued to June 22nd.
All right. Now we need to.
So it was P sixty-three.
P sixty-three is not going to be heard.
Yeah, it was continued to June 22nd. I just know a lot of people were waiting. I didn't want them to have to sit there and. It's discontinued.
Okay, we had an addendum that's being continued.
P ninety-four.
Yep. P ninety-four. Have a date?
I do. Item P ninety-four was published in Tampa Bay Times, April 14th, 2021.
Item P ninety-four is a zoning amendment in the name of Kitty Campus University, Inc., change in zoning from AR1 Agricultural Residential District to a C2 General Commercial District on the southwest corner of the intersection of State Road 54 and Meadowbrook Drive. This is requested for a continuance. Just checking the date.
Which one was that?
P ninety-four.
P ninety-four, it's an addendum, the last one.
Denim.
It's all the way at the end, on page eighty-eight.
It's after N ninety-three.
The new system puts the addendum at the end of your rotational.
Go to the end right here.
Okay.
See, right here, after the whole agenda, it was added.
To a date uncertain.
To a date uncertain. Close your board.
Move to continue, date uncertain.
Got a motion? And a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. Now, we go. Go back. So we'll go back to P sixty. Date.
P fifty-one.
Item P fifty-one.
Two sixty. We hadn't covered two sixty, haven't we?
Our P sixty. Fifty-one would be your next, would be the first consent item.
We don't do that. The six, P sixty, we didn't cover it. We went from fifty-nine to sixty-one.
You haven't done fifty-one, which is your first consent, uh, consent item.
So we've gone through all the consent.
Consent item, consent agenda starts at fifty-one. We haven't done consent yet.
At sixty-one?
Fifty-one.
Whoa. Excuse me. Turn back a page or two. Okay. Fifty-one. P fifty-one.
Item P fifty-one was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 24th, 2021.
Item P fifty-one is a zoning amendment, BMI LLC. It's a change in zoning from an AR Agricultural Residential District to an I1 Light Industrial Park District in east central Pasco County on the west side of Old Lakeland Highway, north of Townsend Road, containing five acres. This comes with a recommendation of approval.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak against P fifty-one? Anywhere, anybody on WebEx?
I have, no one signed up to, in public comment on it. I have no one on WebEx for item P fifty-one.
Okay.
Is anyone at the kiosk for P fifty-one?
At this point, you've got plenty of room in the chambers. There should be nobody in, at the kiosk.
There is nobody at the kiosk.
All right, thank you. Let it remain, let it remain on consent.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, also no emails on item P fifty-one.
And there's no emails?
No emails. Thank you.
The kiosks need to be turned off while we're having one through this, so.
Do you need a motion on P fifty-one?
Okay.
On consent.
On consent.
It's on consent, remains on consent. P fifty-two.
Item P fifty-two was published on the Tampa Bay Times on February 24th, 2021.
Item P fifty-two is PDD 217524. It's a zoning amendment named Swift Mud Cypress Ridge Professional Center. It's a change in zoning from an AC Agricultural District to a PO2 Professional Office District south central Pasco County on the west side of Wesley Chapel Boulevard, approximately half a mile north of State Road 5456, containing nine point one acres. And this comes with a recommendation of approval.
Okay. Is there anyone to speak against P fifty-two?
I have.
Any WebEx?
I have no emails, no WebEx for item P fifty-two, and I have no one signed up on the in-person sheet.
So there's no one at the kiosks? I don't think they hear us out there. Seeing or hearing of anyone?
I apologize, it's hard to hear you from out here in the lobby, but there's nobody here for this item.
Okay, thank you. May it remain on consent?
I was just gonna ask, do they just want to ask anyone that's out at the kiosk to just come inside since there's no one, there's plenty of room?
Yeah. At this point, anybody who is outside should be in the chambers for hearings, so.
So we don't need to ask about the mic out there?
It's overloaded, that's why we had it.
Ask them out there, outside of the kiosks. I don't know if she can hear me or not, but ask if there's anyone out there that's going to speak. If they need to, they need to move into the room. Separated. No one out there to speak? Okay, P fifty-two remains on consent. P fifty-three?
Item P fifty-three was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 2nd, 2021.
Item P fifty-three is a zoning amendment, PDD 217539, Seren Gaddy, MPU, Master Plan Unit Development, Dune FL Land One Sub LLC. It's the extension of an expiration date for an existing MPUD Master Plan Unit Development zoning district to implement mediated settlement pursuant to Section seventy dot five one Florida statutes. This comes with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak against P fifty-three?
I have.
WebEx?
I have two individuals that are signed up in person.
They're here, but they're for the item.
Okay. And I have no email on it, and I have no one on WebEx for this item.
Okay, and no one else has come in, so. There's no one to speak against this item and no one at the kiosk.
Move to approve?
No, 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 no.
We're still consenting.
It remains on consent.
Okay. Sorry, trying to move it on.
All right. P fifty-four.
Item P fifty-four was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 14th, 2021, and by affidavit of certified mailouts and post, site postings.
Item P fifty-four is PDD 21CU14. It's a land excavation operating permit and conditional use request in the name of SiteX NR Holdings LLC. It's an operating permit and conditional use permit for land excavation in an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District in west central Pasco County on the east side of River Glen Boulevard, approximately thirty, eight hundred feet north of the intersection of State Road 54 and River Glen Boulevard on about nineteen point six acres. This comes with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Okay, is anyone on WebEx or speak against this item?
I have no emails. I have no one on WebEx for P fifty-four, and I have no one that has signed up in person.
Okay. So it remains on consent? P fifty-five?
Item P fifty-five was published in Tampa Bay Times on April 21st, 2021.
Item P fifty-five is PDD 210363, Large Scale Conference of Plan Amendment, CPAL 2103 Causeway. It's the transmittal of a proposed large scale Conference of Plan Amendment to the future land use maps two dash fifteen and Sheet twelve, changing from comm commercial to PD Plan Development on approximately thirty-five acres of real property located at the southwest corner of Roaches Run and Ninety Lakes Boulevard in a text amendment creating subarea policy flu seven dot one dot fifty-eight Causeway PD and a map amendment to the future land use map two dash nine, adding subarea map two dash nine fifty-eight Causeway. This comes with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, is anyone to speak against P fifty-five? Is there one?
I have no one on WebEx, no emails. And I have no one who's signed on the sign-on sheet.
Okay, and no one in the room to speak against P fifty-five? Okay. Remains on consent? P fifty-six?
Item P fifty-six was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 21st, 2021.
All right. Item P fifty-six is UT 210262. It's a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, designating that area commonly known as Cypress Preserve Phases Three B and Two B Three as a streetlight service area and consolidating Cypress Preserve Phases Three B and Two B Three with the existing Cypress Preserve Streetlight Service Area for streetlight improvements and to levy assessments against the property benefited by the street lighting improvements in accordance with the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety-four, Article three, Sections ninety, ninety-four dash through forty-six, ninety-four dash forty-six through ninety-four dash fifty-six. Comes with a recommendation of approval.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak against P fifty-six? Is there any WebEx or?
So I have, P fifty-six, no WebEx, no email, and no one has signed on the signup.
Okay. May it remain on consent? P fifty-seven?
Item P fifty-seven was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 21st, 2021.
Item P fifty-seven is a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, authorizing an upgrade to the street lighting improvements and an assessment rate increase for the country closed streetlight service area in accordance with the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety-four, Article two, Sections ninety-four dash forty-six through ninety-four dash fifty-six.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak against P fifty?
I have no email, no one on WebEx, and no one signed up on the signup sheet.
Okay. May it remain on consent? P fifty-eight?
Item P fifty-eight was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 21st, 2021.
Item P fifty-eight is a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, authorizing an upgrade to the street lighting improvements and an assessment rate increase for Ernie's Court at Van Dalen Village Streetlight Service Area in accordance with the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety-four, Article two, Sections ninety-four dash forty-six through ninety-four dash fifty-six. Comes with a recommendation of approval.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak against P fifty-nine?
Fifty-eight? P fifty-eight?
P fifty-eight.
Okay. I have no emails on P fifty-eight, no one on WebEx, and no one has signed on the signup sheet.
Okay. May it remain on consent? Next item? P fifty-nine?
Item P fifty-nine was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 21st, 2021.
Item P fifty-nine, UT 210303, is a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, authorizing an upgrade to the street lighting improvements and an assessment rate increase for the Austine Estates Streetlight Service Area in accordance with the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety-four, Article two, Sections ninety-four dash forty-six through ninety-four dash fifty-six. Comes with a recommendation of approval.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak against?
So, for item P fifty-nine, I have no email, no one's on WebEx, and no one's signed up on the.
No one's signed up to speak? Okay. May it remain on consent? P sixty?
Item P sixty was published in Tampa Bay Times on April 21st, 2021.
Item P sixty is UT 210306. Is a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, authorizing consolidation of the areas commonly known as Wood Trail Village Units One, Two A and Two B, and Wood Trail Village and Wood Trail Village Unit Three into one Wood Trail Village Streetlight Service Area in upgrade to the street lighting improvements and an assessment rate increase in accordance with the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety-four, Article two, Sections ninety-four dash forty-six through ninety-four dash fifty-six. Comes to a recommendation with approval, for approval.
Okay. Anyone here to speak against P sixty?
I have no emails on it. I have no one on WebEx, and no one is signed up on the signup sheet.
Okay. With that, it remains on consent, and I close your board on the consent items.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion passed five zero. P sixty-one?
Item P sixty-one was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 10th, 2021.
Good afternoon, everyone. Tammy Snyder, Planning and Development. This is a zoning amendment, Life Church MPUD Master Plant Unit Development, Victorious Life Assembly of God Incorporated, a rezoning request from an AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District to an MPUD Master Plant Unit Development District to allow one hundred twenty-two single-family detached residential units on approximately forty-one point eighty acres. And comes to you with a recommendation of approval, and I do have a PowerPoint. All righty. Life Church MPUD. There's a location map. It is just on the east side of Old Pasco Road, just a little south of Overpass Road. Proposed as a rezoning request from an AR zoning district to an MPUD to allow one hundred twenty-two single-family detached residential units. Next slide. Also requested are variations from the LDC, Neighborhood Park Landscaping. The applicant wants to install the landscaping internal to the park rather than around the perimeter. Neighborhood Park acreage, the requirement is one point two-two acres. The request is point seven acres. Payment into the sidewalk fund in lieu of construction of a sidewalk on Old Pasco, seeing as how Old Pasco is currently being widened. And then allowance of an additional ten-foot lane at the entrance for emergency access. There's also a proposed emergency access to the south of this project, which will be utilized if and when the roadway to the south, Blair Road, I believe it is, is constructed. However, at the time of site plan approval, emergency accesses will be reviewed, and additional emergency accesses may be required elsewhere regardless of the southern road construction. Next slide. And here's our master plan. Next slide. All right. The planning commission heard the item at the April 22nd, 2021 meeting and voted to recommend approval with amended and added conditions of approval. First of all, the park landscaping, the planning commission recommended approval of the request. And the intent of this section of the code is to create an aesthetically pleasing atmosphere, which internal landscaping will achieve. And it creates a more open and inviting space rather than a space that can appear segregated. And also obstructing the view of children playing, you know, with fencing or plantings could possibly create a safety concern. The park size, the planning commission recommended approval of a park no less than point nine acres. As you know, the request was point seven. And it must have at least three amenities installed. And the intent of the neighborhood park requirement is to create recreational opportunities. And this park with the addition of a minimum of three amenities will certainly provide recreation. Paying into the sidewalk fund, the planning commission recommended approval of that. Of course, as Old Pasco Road is being constructed, it wouldn't make sense for them to construct a sidewalk just to have it torn up and reconstructed. The emergency access, the planning commission recommended approval of this request as well. LDC Section nine oh one point three does allow for an extra ten-foot lane at the entrance of a project to serve as the emergency access. However, as I said, the conditions state that the proposal will be reviewed further at the site plan review stage. And then their added condition about pond fencing, the planning commission recommended addition of a condition to require fencing around the stormwater ponds for safety. The Land Development Code only requires fencing in certain situations, such as wet ponds that have banks with slopes greater than four to one. On this project, the planning commission has requested that all ponds be fenced regardless of slope. This has not been imposed on other similar projects. And the planning commission did not provide any unique factors of this site that would justify that requirement being applied here when not applied on other projects. And additionally, fencing can potentially cause issues with proper pond maintenance and may become unsightly, which could have the potential to devaluate properties in the subdivision. Next slide. The subject parcel currently reflects the original zoning district of AR, and it's just under forty-two acres of vacant unapproved land. And the LDC does specify that variations from the. And the LDC does specify that variations from the code may be reviewed and approved by the planning commission and board during the public hearing held on the application for which the MPUD, for an MPUD zoning amendment. And variations are allowed where the BCC specifically finds in that particular case that the proposed variations meter exceed the intent of the code. And Planning and Development Department has reviewed this and given you our recommendations. The proposed request is consistent with the Pasco County LDC and the applicable provisions of the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. And with that, PDD recommends approval with conditions.
Is the applicant here to speak?
So the applicant is on WebEx but not able to be promoted. There is a call in user, so he might be calling in on a number. We can allow that person to talk, if you'd like to see if it is Mr. Al Belusha.
So he's calling in to speak to us or?
Well, we don't know, there is a number, we don't know the number.
Oh, okay.
It's in there. Oh, the number just hung up, the number just hung up, so.
Okay.
So we're not able to promote Mr. Belusha on this.
Okay, is anyone here to speak at this item other than the applicant?
Yes, sir, I do not have any emails, and besides Mr. Belusha, no one else is on WebEx. However, we have two individuals that signed up in the sign in sheet that are here today.
And they're in the room?
I hope so.
Okay, I see them.
So we have Christopher Phillips and Valerie Phillips, the two that signed up.
You come forward and speak.
Okay.
You hang up?
Hello, oh, no. Hello, can you hear?
That is the applicant.
Yeah, that would be Justina and Al.
And Al, yes, we're here, sorry, there's been some kind of lag, and we've been having a lot of technical issues. But we're here, we're.
Introduce us.
This is Justina Gale, Florida Design Consultant.
Al Belusha, Florida Design Consultant.
Mike Davey with KB Home, applicant.
Shelley Johnson, the applicant's representative.
Craig Wick, KB Home, applicant.
Now, yes, we're here, sorry, there's been some kind of lag, and we're here. Justina.
Not going to be able to understand what you're saying.
Well, you know what?
So it sounds like they've got it on a TV or something else other than what they're speaking on, and so we're here.
We're not able to hear you with your connection you have. If you'll be available, let us let the people that are going to speak to this item here in our presence, and then we'll come back to you to answer any questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Name and address for the record.
My name is Valerie Phillips, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my son, Christopher Phillips. He's a homeowner behind this such property on Williams Acres on the Blair Drive. I think I had emailed everyone, I hope you got my email on this. I had also sent video that I couldn't get out yesterday, and they said they received it this morning, but I'm not for sure if you received the video. The video is very important to it because I was standing in front of this property, the subject property, and there's two schools just to the north of Old Pasco Road and Overpass Road. It's Cypress Creek Middle School and Cypress Creek High School, and then there Hernando Pasco Community College for the forming arts is there.
Right.
And if you were to stand in front of the property, their exit would be one exit because Blair Drive is a private road. Williams Acres, when they developed these mobile homes in there, they decided that this was going to be a private road, and it exited onto Old Pasco Road, or Overpass Road, which is now closed, so they put them a new entrance in. So if you look at the map that I had on page twenty five of the subject property, it shows that Blair Drive runs in between the subject property and the new industrial park that's going to be built there from the company on the wastewater spray land, the old, right next there on Old Pasco Road, and they're developing that as well. There's, right now, so many cars going up and down through there, and with them having one exit, because to the south is Blair, and just south of that is the industrial park right next to it. Blair Drive to the intersection of Old Pasco Road and Overpass Road is only zero point three miles. And so they, if they have one exit, they're going to be a tenth of a mile to the intersection.
Am I confused, or is there exit onto Old Pasco Road?
Let her finish her comments, you got one more minute.
Be an exit onto Old Pasco Road for the subject community, but it would be onto Old Pasco Road, which is, when it's developed, I'm sure, what I've been reading, it's going to be four lanes, maybe five. So, and then you got a tenth of a mile here at the intersection to get on I seventy five. Are they going to have to go out and make a U-turn to go south to fifty four? I mean, they're going to have to cross a few lanes to get over there, you're talking one hundred and twenty two homes. If they have two cars per home, a lot of us do, and then some, you're talking about two hundred and fifty more cars in that area right now. And I talked to Tom Lane, he's in charge of FDOT project for the I seventy five, and he just cannot believe that the industrial park is being built right now and they're right side by side, because on the southbound ramps took up most of my son's community back there in the back, and then the industrial park, if you see that video, is right there next to it. And so then you got on and off ramps in that little piece of property of forty acres, they want to put one hundred and twenty two homes in there. I just am not understanding, I think we should wait. We tried to attend the planning commission meeting, and in that planning commission meeting, we were registered online, and him and, my son and I were both there, his name was on there in that little square, we never could get connected for them, and eventually they said, well, he wasn't approved. Well, I have the emails that I sent to all of you that shows we were approved, and we were on there. And in that meeting, they had said, and I'm not for sure who represented the community, the subject property, but they said that, one of the commissioners asked them, one of the people on the planning asked them, when is Old Pasco Road going to be done?
Yep.
And they said, at the same time as seventy five, and that, they said, twenty twenty two. Well, talking to Tom Lay, who's in charge of that project, he said, it's been pushed back till summer twenty twenty three, and if they have problems with that big overpass, which is going to come from Boyette, like the one on Bruce B Downs does, over top of everything and go southbound, they may take it to the beginnings of twenty twenty four. So there are just a lot of dump trucks, and you, I talked to the school, there's like eighty buses trying to come through there, and if you watch the video I sent you, you will see that, I think we need to put the brakes on this project, at least until we get that seventy five and that red light and get the infrastructure done. There's a lot of construction going on down there on the south side of the seven mile stretch of Old Pasco Road. And it's just, if you want to add more in between those two, it's going to cause problems for the state with seventy five, because they're going in and out of there with dump trucks and water trucks, and then right there at the industrial park, they're doing the same thing. And then not even a half a mile down the road, just beyond that mobile home park there, they're doing it again right there too, eleven hundred homes going in there. I'm real happy that the intersection came there at Oakley, so we can get people moving out of the way and keep people going. My big, big, big thing to my heart with this project is, I live just facing the Epperson Ranch off Curly Road. I'm at Tendon Curly, the first driveway. Mr. Oakley, I think I've spoke with you on the phone about that construction. But my response time to my son, where I used to go down Curly and across Dlem and over Overpass Road, was five minutes when he had a seizure.
Your time's up, man.
Now I have to go up around fifty four, I mean, down around fifty four or up fifty two, twenty five minutes. So now, if you add more.
Your time's up.
Okay, if you add more, it's probably going to be about forty minutes.
All right, thank you for your, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Back to the applicant.
Hello?
We hear you.
Can I, can I make a comment?
This is Justina Gale, Florida Design Consultant.
Everybody else on that thing.
Do you have any question?
Yeah, this is.
We can't understand what you're saying with your connection.
Hi, can you hear us? This is the applicant, Mike Davey with KB Home, here with Al Belusha, Justina from Florida Design Communities. Can we answer any questions?
I have some questions, this is Commissioner Starkey.
Questions by Commissioner Starkey?
One, I would want there to be no fences. I'm in agreement with the staff that the fences are going to be an eyesore, and I think they're going to try, trying to make that area all incorporated into a park-like setting, and I think the fence would, if the slope is within the safety rules of whoever makes those rules, then I think it's better to not have the fence, that's number one. Number two, I'm just kind of curious from our staff, knowing that the high schools are up here, then you've got the park not too far from here, right? Isn't there a park on the other side?
It's not, it's not quick to get to, you gotta, right now, how it's everything set up, it's on the other side of seventy five.
Yeah. So, so. So I'm wondering, what, is there a trail network planned for this area? Because I don't see any reservation for any multi-use trail on this, and so I'm wondering where it is, since there's a middle school and high school up the street and a park around the corner. Has anyone in planning, anyone looked at the trail network in the area?
Mike, you don't have a trail up there near, well, Holly.
Well, you should.
I've never heard of a trail coming down Old Pasco Road.
Well, there should be one.
I'm sure there'd be sidewalks.
That's not the same.
Being Portland. Where's the trail coming from, what's the connection of a trail? I mean, just have a trail.
If there isn't one, you should be planning for one, that's what I'm saying. If you don't ask them to put one in, they're not going to.
To, to answer the question for Old Pasco Road, there is not a trail that is indicated on our official maps.
There's no other transportation method here but get in your car and drive somewhere.
The nearest trail is located at Overpass Road and continues westward down Bennington, what amounts to Bennington Drive.
But is there, I don't know what that is, but I'm just, I'm just suggesting that you, suggesting that someone look and try and plan for something that connects to that school and other amenities that are around, because there are many ways to travel beside your car that are coming, and if we don't plan for them, you're not going to have that, those corridors, so, that's all.
Is there a trail that were connected to Boyette Road?
Commissioner, we'll have to check, but I think Old Pasco Road probably has a multi-use path as part of the design of Old Pasco Road, and I think Overpass also has one.
Well, I'm hoping so, and I'm hoping it's not smushed up against the road, just like you saw the fatality that just occurred in, on the Stark, well, it was the Pedeleus part of the Starkey Gap Connector, but when you have a trail smushed up against the road, it's still dangerous.
So it's not there yet, but so you know, when Overpass is built, they will continue Overpass Road through Connected City, across Curly, onto Hankart Road, and then eventually it comes out at three oh one, and actually, if we had a trail in that area that could go that way.
Right.
It could connect to the trail that's on three oh one there in Zephyr Hills.
That'd be great.
And continue on to Date City and on to the north, so that, that could be a connection we would have there. The traffic will change once we open that back up, because that road's going to alleviate a lot of problems they're having now, because they can't cross over seventy five. But the connection that's not even built there on the other side for Overpass going to the east, it's not built, but once Overpass is done, they're going to build that area. And then eventually we four lane Old Pasco Road, and a lot of issues will be solved when that's all four lane across there from pitch four to pitch two, because it's, right now, is pretty much a two lane road, and a lot of traffic.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, you've heard from me a lot in the past about Old Pasco Road and the concerns with Old Pasco Road of only being two lanes, and the amount of development that's currently going in. There's, there's a ton of development that's currently going on Old Pasco Road. There's a lot of proposed development along Old Pasco Road as well. One of the things we all agreed upon when we did the industrial park is that, that industrial park cannot receive its CO until that portion of Old Pasco that sits in front of the industrial park was widened. At the same time, you know, I don't have a set date, nobody's given me a set date of when the remainder of Old Pasco Road is actually going to be widened, we've spoken about it. We know, thankfully, F-Tot helping, once again, helping us to widen that road. But Commissioner Starkey is correct, when you think about the school, and I know that school very well because I have two children, I have one that goes to the high school, and I have one that goes to the middle school. And it's very similar to the situation that we've heard about in the, kind of the areas you and I share, Commissioner Oakley, so you and I kind of share that area, and we kind of share that area on Boyette. And if you look at Boyette Road and where West East Chapel District Park is, there's, and Commissioner Starkey alluded to this, you got kids walking in the ditches on the grass to go back and forth, and adults as well. I've known of people that have gotten hit on bikes on Boyette Road, and actually, one unfortunately passed away. This was a couple years back, so you're kind of running into the same situation at Old Pasco Road. So when we think about the future, and we think about good development and access, whether it be trails or for just vehicles alone, unfortunately, you know, and I've stayed this for a long time, I mean, Old Pasco, we should have considered that, or I did, but, and not you, fellow commissioners too, a lot of you did too, but in the past, way down, way back when, it should have been done, knowing that a lot of this development was going to come. And now we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, because you have more proposed developments, more proposed developments, on a two lane road, that's very dangerous. The amount of school buses and that person that mentioned earlier is not incorrect about the amount of school buses, again, I drive it on a regular basis, and the school, the amount of school buses going along Old Pasco Roads is incredible, and some of those areas with the blind spots and the turns with no shoulders, where the buses go off the road, even my truck, and I've even taken my RV down that road before in the past, and not doing it again, because that was not fun, and there's actually an RV parked there. So, you know, I have, I have concerns, and unfortunately, we're not able to hear from the developer. I don't know why the meeting's open, why aren't they not here?
Nope.
We're no, the only, there's no applicant here, so I'm just not sure why, but the meeting's open now, why either the applicant's not here, we don't have a good connection, because I'd love to hear from them and have a conversation with them, but we can't do that right now.
No, Mike wasn't there.
Well, they just kept having to cut, they kept cutting it off, and they had it cut off. So I would love to have conversations with them, but I think this item should be continued until we can have the applicant sitting right in front of us, so we can go back and forth and have a conversation, because right now we can't. So that's fair, that's being fair to the applicant, but it's also being fair to the people that have come here and spoken. That's my motion, is to continue this.
All right. Hold it. Commissioner Moore, to what date, just so we don't have a re-advertising.
Well, so this is, and to be honest with you, and to be honest with you, this should really be being held on the other side of the county now, because we have opened up the rooms, so I think we should be getting back to where we're hearing items on the appropriate side of the county, since there's public comment and people are allowed in, because they had to drive all the way, you know, you know, for fifty minutes to get here, so let's start giving.
The June eighth meeting.
I don't know, if you think, June eighth's pretty loaded. I don't know if June eighth's aggressive, but I'll leave it up to staff and you guys, but if you think it could fit in June eighth, it's your call.
I haven't seen the June eighth agenda.
Well, I know there's been some big items continued that are going to take, they're going to have a lot of public comment, from my understanding, but I could be wrong. But, but I'm fine, if you think we can fit it in June eighth, I'm fine to continue that, but.
Continue the date of June eighth.
I need we give applicant, the applicant the opportunity, I think we need to give the public an opportunity, and I think we. I think we need to give the public an opportunity, and I think we need to research that road. I think staff needs to come back, able to come back to us and say, this is exactly when Old Pasco Road is going to be widened. I hear about it every single week. And only a portion, a small portion of that's like kind of in my district, but, you know, we share that area. So there's my motion to June eighth. If you want to push it back further, it's up to staff.
Any more discussion, please?
So I've got a motion to continue this item till June eighth.
Did you want to say something?
I did.
Yes, sure.
Go ahead and speak before we do.
Thank you. And Commissioner Moore, I think you bring up some great points. You get all these homes that come in, no sidewalk in front or no trail alongside it. It's great to making the contribution, but I don't think that should be opened up until really that sidewalk's in place because all those kids heading up to school, coming back. We're going to put some safety precautions in there, at least until they're under construction or even beforehand. I'm also not comfortable taking the park size down to, you know, point nine acres. There's no reason it can't stick at one point two, which is our code. Granted, they gave us extra right of way, but still, there's nothing else in for this, those kids to do. If you look at the development, there's no, I don't see anything on there anyway. Does anyone? Maybe that's something they can discuss, but those kids need somewhere to play and not just out going across the school.
That's a busy road.
Those kids are using the district park is what they end up when that's complete across there.
There's going to be a ten-foot path, trail of the district park on Overpass Road.
But in your own neighborhood, we put that park ordinance in for a neighborhood for the kids to be able to stay in the neighborhood and play. And I really like the fact that the.
They're not riding by.
Planning Commission actually put some amenities in there as far as to do that. I'd like to see them do that, too.
Yes.
I can understand if they were to put a brown wooden fence in there, but I know like Carlton Arms, just for an example, that black fence, I'm just concerned with safety because I know when we had a pond out north of fifty-two and a three-year-old boy had drowned in the pond. So do we have any safety guidelines around ponds and retention ponds?
It depends on the slope.
Depends on the slope. If it's greater than four to one, then yes, you're required to put a fence up.
These are not.
Deeper than four to one.
And these are not four to one.
So what's the depth on them?
They're gentle slopes. They're all over Starkey. There's no fences.
Well, your two-year-old's not going to know the difference on the slope. So that's what my concern is.
There's the, there's the, Mike Carbala right there can answer you.
I apologize. Could you repeat the question, please?
I'm just concerned about the slow, just basically retention ponds in general and the water safety of kids and drowning, since it is one of the leading causes of deaths in Florida for children under the age of five.
So ponds, as far as they being adjacent to roads or?
Fences around ponds, what does, it's required four to one? If it's four to one.
Typically, four to one slopes, I'm sorry, yes.
But if it's less than that, you don't have to put a fence.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah.
But what's the depth of the pond? Just curious.
Doesn't matter.
Just depends on where the water ends.
Some ponds never have water, some.
The theory is that if it's less than, if it's, if the slope is not greater than four to one, that anybody can get back out of the pond once they get into it. That's, that's. Behind a four to one slope.
Yeah, as opposed to a pool where it's a vertical face.
Right.
It's four to one, you can walk up that.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I'm sorry, I know we made a motion to continue. I don't, if I heard a second yet, but this is one last thing. This is just for something for the team, the staff, and everybody, you know, that's involved in any type of projects along Old Pasco Road. There, there has to be a point here where, this is my opinion, that we're, we need to start requiring some of these developers to put into the pot to widen that road or it's going to take forever. I know we said that we're going to have FDOT helping, but FDOT is not paying for a hundred percent of widening that road. We have not, we have not heard that. If, Mr. Carbala, that's not in agreement, correct?
No, not yet.
Exactly. So that's an assistant. So we talk about kicking the can down the road. Well, if we're going to allow projects, this road needs to be widened. It has to happen.
Well, do they pay impact fees? Do they pay transportation impact fees?
Yeah.
Is that where you get the money to widen the road?
Not as in Ford everything in this county.
Well, I'm just saying, where do you get the money to widen the road?
I mean, that's, that's the point of those funds.
Yeah.
But, you know, whether or not they, they make the county whole is a different discussion.
Right. But I just, you know, again, those roads, that road is not safe. You have multiple schools there. This is also the same spot that you have the new, the new, I would call it a convention, Fine Arts Center, right, as well.
Oh, yeah.
But in Commissioner Starkey, you brought it up, you brought it many a times, you know, if we're going to make these roads safe, there's going to have to be access for these kids to get back and forth. If we're going to have it a community, a quote of a walkable community, then it, you know, that has to be thought about.
Yeah, but my, my heads up was kind of to the planning staff that you, I mean, they need, they need to be looking at that.
Right, right. Has to be done, right?
That grid has to be in place and people, everyone needs to know where it is.
But drive on fifty, drive on fifty-four in Old Pasco and see how much traffic's coming out there now and see where it's going.
Don't the impact fees also go to parks?
There are different impact fees for transportation and for parks and for libraries. Yeah. And for fire stations. Each, each component has its own, its own impact fees.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think Commissioner Moore brings up another good point as far as all the development coming in.
It's closed now.
May, maybe there should be a, what, they used to have a proportionate share?
It's right there.
Folks?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead. I want to, I want to make sure you guys hear this.
Oh.
You know, Commissioner Moore, I think you bring up a good point, development coming in. We used to have certain things, we'd make them do a pipeline project, consider a proportionate share on top of what the impact fees would be. And I think on this roadway, maybe we should be taking a look at that and that can be part of the discussion when it comes up. Except the legislature has taken away your ability to do that. All right. That's why we don't do proportionate share anymore. Okay.
Okay, your motion still stand?
Yeah.
Continue to June eighth, Dade City, one thirty.
Well, second. Well, I wanted.
I've got a second.
Okay, but okay, under discussion, let me ask you something. If, if this were to go through, then how long would it be? And I don't know if the applicant can even answer this. How long would it be before anyone moved in here? It'd be years. Two years. Yeah, two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, let's just find out, let, give them the opportunity, you know, to.
Let's find out some of the, if staff will do some research also and bring it back to us on this item when we come back to Dade City. Also.
All right, well, I don't want to delay it anymore than the one.
Look at, look at some of the information that we need on when that road will be improved and, and the possibility of trails. Bring that back to us at the same time. So I think that'll help everyone concerned, so, okay? All right, I got a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like so? Motion pass five zero. Okay. Now we'll go to item P sixty-four.
Item P sixty-four was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir. Commissioner, this is called the Public Works. And next slide, please. This is the Lakewood Villas P VAS number three, three, five, four. Excuse me, storm-damaged roads, they were temporarily repaired. And just by way of reminder, back in March twenty twenty-one, we had a public hearing which was continued, which gave Commissioner Fitzpatrick an opportunity to meet with the community. So just by way of refresher, these roads were temporarily repaired because of the storms in two thousand fifteen sixteen. This is a board-initiated project. Eleven roads are in this project, three hundred and five lots, three hundred and ten point seven nine ERUs. Next, please. Estimated cost is one point four million dollars. Maximum cost per ERU is four thousand six hundred and nine dollars eighty-four cents. The discounted amount is two hundred and eight, two thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Maximum cost per ERU after the discount is three thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and twelve cents. The annual installation is over a ten-year period and the interest rate is three point two five percent interest. Next, please. This is the location map of the project area. Next. This is one of the historic photos from two thousand fifteen. Next. And these are more recent pictures, about six or seven months ago. See the point drive?
Oh, goodness.
And I think there's one more. This is showing where we had chip seal. If you see the, some areas to the right midway in the pictures where the chip seal is no longer, it's, it's.
Worn off.
Worn off.
Yeah.
And that's it.
I have additional photos.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So I had additional photos regarding this, and I did have some concerns, as you can see when the photos come up. And then I know there were four other concerns. Do you want me to address them now or?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now.
So one was the stormwater project. The stormwater project is going to be, is already in the works. They've already gone out and started the surveying. This project would not be started until twelve to eighteen months, is what I was told.
Yeah, next spring.
Making sure that there's enough time for the stormwater project to be completed. I do know on the other side, there is a storage shed being completed as well. And this is, this isn't Lakewood Villas, but this is the road, this, the road parallel to Lakewood Villas on the right side. That's what all the roads used to look like. But again, we'd have to wait until that storage shed was completed because that's what the, well, the roads are already deteriorating. And I'm sharing this picture because if this is what it looks like a couple hundred feet down the road, I'm afraid that the other side is not going to hold up. Another concern, okay, so stormwater, the storage, we have paving, twelve to eighteen months. We'll have to make sure it's timed properly. Another concern. Newport Ritchie was asking originally to postpone this project because they were thinking about septic to sewer, but that project wouldn't even, even be in consideration for another five to seven years, which I honestly don't think these roads would last another seven years. And lastly, Mr. Ainsley, were you able to find out the access to the mobile homes? Because then they would have to be included or are we going to not allow them?
They're not included, and the question about traffic count, we don't have that information.
So because they use that as an access, access road into their neighborhood, are we going to not allow them to have that access road or are they going to pay a percentage?
We have to recalculate and pay a percentage, percentage. But what I'm saying is that when the original calculation was done, there was a gate there and the access was limited. So it was told that it was just for emergency reasons. I've been hearing in the meetings that they're using it on a daily basis, so let us change it. But we do not have a traffic count for, for that access.
Five to ten, five to ten cars going by in the, just the couple minutes I was taking the photos. So I do know that should be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Did Brantford have something to add to the, maybe the stormwater issues or something, how that's going to be done, how it'll fit in with this project?
Yes. Brantford Aduma, Public Works Director. I wanted to add when the question came out about a pending stormwater maintenance project. Yes, it's coming up and it's going to be starting spring of next year, but it's going to be done well in advance before we start the P VAS project, which is going to be FY twenty twenty-three. And, and that project is supposed to assist in, you know, preventing water from getting to homes as well as the roads. So there are going to be pipes installed and inlets installed as well.
So that being done right before the P VAS is done?
Yes, way ahead.
That road will be in great shape at that time.
Yes, that will be done way ahead before we start.
This surveying sticks are already in the ground at the end of Cypress and Runle Drive and also on the opposite side of the lake. And some, a neighbor in the community, citizen, had said they were getting ready to run pipes or something to the lake to make sure the roads weren't, the homes wouldn't be flooding. So you're telling us the P VAS won't even take into consideration of, even if approved today, till two thousand twenty-three?
FY twenty-three, yes.
So that will continue the project later on down the road. And then, so the, if you can go back to the beginning of the photos. Okay, so this is starting, this is the second entrance in, which isn't this project, but if you go down Cypress Drive and make a left, this is the other entrance into the project on Kena. And then that's what I'm afraid of, is those roads not lasting another five to seven years. If you can continue, please. Not sure they'll even last until fiscal year twenty twenty-three, but you can continue. You can continue. That was on the other side.
Do we have anyone signed up on WebEx?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you, before you get to public, I'd like to comment.
Can we finish?
Go ahead and comment.
So, can I finish your photos?
Go ahead, Marion.
Can you pause?
Let her finish. All right.
So the road was kind of up and down here, but if you want to keep going, this is on Runle Road going down Runle. And then this was that side street, may have been that same street, actually. Keep going. And then this is where Cypress Knoll actually starts. I think it's Madrid. If you go to the next photo, this is also the entrance into the mobile home park. And that they've already have fulfilled in all those potholes. You can continue, please? So that's Madrid and Cypress Knoll, and then continue. Here's a couple more just at this intersection, and then we're going to go down Cypress Knoll. And then just, it continued. And then there's just, as you can see.
And, and so when you see, when you see a crack in chip seal, there's not much to patch. I mean, that, I mean, that's.
Can you finish?
That's very thin layer there. It's not like it's a big old deep asphalt road.
Yes, again, Brantford Aduma, Public Works Director, exactly, once you see those cracks coming and the patching, what we call the road is beyond portal patching.
Right.
Because any further work that we do is very expensive and costly. So it's time for us to mill and pave the road.
There was another house, another street, I think Parkside, when I was driving around the lake. When you walked down, you could take your foot and move the rocks back and forth. And the one gentleman said he's been sweeping up these rocks for about three years now. So, and then there's a lot of areas where the road is decaying, well, not there anymore. So that was the roads. Oh, and there was another one, and it was right in front of Runle and Cypress. There was actually grass growing up in the middle of the road. So you want to pull that up? Well, Mr. Mayor.
You got that picture or not?
Yeah, he showed it. Yes, he showed it to me previously before the meeting. No, it was from his cell.
While they're pulling that up, Mr. Snyder, this is the road that my brother, my brother lives on Cypress Knoll, and though he's in favor of the P VAS, I'm not allowed to vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I can resend it if you would like to.
Is that, is that the, on the entryway into Cypress? Into Lakewood from Mass Ave? That's right on the entrance you're coming in, right?
Yes, when you come in on Runle, this is the photo. I don't know if you need me to send, resend it, but when you come in, there's dips in the road or cracks and there's grass growing into the middle of the road.
That's, matter of fact, one of my video might even show that.
Oh, okay.
If you would, I'll send a video.
So that's why I'm concerned the roads are not gonna last.
Well, and you know, I, I looked at that too and that was the one section of the road that I was suspect with. Brantford, you just mentioned about potholes too. Now, I asked staff to send me how many pothole repairs they've done for the past three years. They've sent me the past six years. I think it was like six potholes that were done in the past three.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of that data, but I can look into that.
Came from your staff.
Yes, I can, I, I'll, I'll look into that.
Coming up here on the left. Well, there's pothole there.
Right off the bat, there was, there was a pothole.
Wait, oh, I screened one out. But right up here, if you slow down, like right here, that's where that grass is, right there.
Right.
On the side of the road.
But you don't really do potholes on chip seal.
Well, I'll, I'll agree. So here's, here's what the road condition is. So you can look at it just as you're driving the road going down. And I drove it all the way down. I didn't video the whole thing down, but I drove it all the way down. I then drove down three cul-de-sacs coming up. I then drove in the parallel road that runs up to the side all the way through. And that would, that's what drove me to actually go find, well, how much money we spent to maintain this road? And there's like six potholes in the past three years. We're not spending a lot of money on this thing. This is another one.
I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is that there's hardly any road left.
Please let me finish. When we have people that live in a neighborhood and they respond, now, a forced paving assessment is one thing. When you go to the public and ask them what they think, I'm, I'm open to listen to what they have to, to take the results of that even better. But you've got a petition that we received, I think yesterday, maybe this morning. Two hundred and seven people out of three hundred and ten ERUs have said they don't want it. I mean, why are we forcing this down to people in an area that doesn't need it? You could fix that little, one little section right there. I agree. Take away that one section, everything is in good shape. And that's the busiest road going into that little, that little section right there. Go fix that, but the rest of it, it can wait. And if these people don't wanna spend their money, so their money, why are we forcing it down their throats? Two hundred and ten people don't want it out of three hundred and ten ERUs. I don't even know why we're even discussing this to any, any further again. This is like another Crane's Roost. People have clearly spoken, they don't want it.
They were also concerned on Parkside about, uh, uh, people have come, also said to me, they were told and they remember being told, that's, and a lot of the roads are cracked like that. So they've told me, yes, we were told originally when they were doing the temporary chip seal, they would be come back in five years. They were aware, they were, they knew about it. They didn't have an issue with that. They knew the roads needed to be done. Now also, one of the major concerns was the speeding. So Mr. Mike Kabala and I had spoke about that as well. And he had addressed that he was gonna look into putting in the flash and speeding signs or other caution signs. And my other question is, what do we need to do to reduce the speed limit and they're down from thirty miles an hour to twenty-five?
Well, let's, let's stay on the paving first.
So we would, we would wanna conduct, you know, a traffic study, a speed study, and then I've talked with traffic operations about accomplishing that.
Thank you.
All right, I have, uh, this is a public here on this item, so I do have a person here to speak and I have, uh, an email to read into record. So if we'll go ahead and finish that up, then we'll decide what to do from here.
All right, the, um, individual that signed up, Judy Marksen. You could state your name and address for the record and you may begin.
Judy Marksen, I have a home at seven one six one Cedar Point Drive, seven two 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 Cedar Point Drive, and recently sold a home on Runnel. I sold that home because of the flooding. I have gotten with all of, as many residents as I could possibly can. I totally agree with the comments. Why are we forcing residents to pay one point four million now when, when property insurance costs are going up by legislation thirteen percent this year in the state of Florida? On top of property tax increases and the like. We went, just a handful of folks and I went door to door, went to over two hundred, well, two hundred and fourteen people. Only five people were for the project, only five. We stopped knocking on doors because of the risks involved. They do have a question, um, on whether Ms. Fitzpatrick should be a voting member because you, if, if the records are correct, you own a home on Cypress, just five homes past the pavement line and that you've communicated that paved roads increase property values. So I have been asked on behalf of residents to ask the board to please look into that, that we don't know.
County attorney has already given an opinion that she doesn't have a conflict on this project.
Okay, I, every, everybody just wanted to hear that, so.
And that she, the.
I brought it up.
Okay.
The, the next project where the house is located that she will be assessed on, she has a conflict on. But in this project where there is no assessment to the property she owns, under state law, she would not have a conflict.
Okay, I just, I just needed to clarify. Thank you. But, but the sewer, uh, I talked to the supervisor over the sewer department, Emmanuel, yesterday. He said he's right at this point, as of yesterday morning, they're not sure whether it's one year, two years, three years or five years. They're not sure. There is no plan in place for sewers. What they do know, they would have to tear up the streets, lay down the pipes and repave the streets. So, and, and sewers are all over the place around us, point four, uh, points of a mile away from us. So sewers will be happening, new water lines will be happening, um, to upgrade this area. I do have the actual petition, if you need the hard copy and pictures of flooding, um, if I could present that to the chairman. I'm sorry?
Motion to receive a file.
Second.
In a second, all those favors, say aye.
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 All opposed, like so. Motion pass five zero.
Thank you. Um, the flooding is extreme right now and the repairs, I've been here for eleven years watching these, these floods happen. The repairs, they've tried to fix this three times. I talked to the, um, stormwater engineer. Um, the project is on hold. They're, they're calling in a contractor to really try to assess what they should do with these stormwaters. Because sending it into Lake Cedar is, has always been the answer, but that causes extreme flooding in the, on the, for the lakeside owners, which both my homes are on the lakes. I see it go up to my back door into the pool, take out the pool pump. I've seen it. So the answers in the last few years is that, oh, oh no, is that, that they have not fixed the flooding. So I'm, I'm, I'm glad they're looking at alternatives. It cannot be sending water into, uh, Lake Cedar. Um, residents cannot afford these increases at this, this time and they really request a no vote from the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, can I say what, when I, what happened when I had my meeting?
Finish public comment, then you can add in commissioner discussion. Okay, I believe your time's up.
I believe so. Thank, thank you.
You, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Now we have an email to read into record.
Yes, sir, and, um, no one is on WebEx for this item. The email is from Kathy Norton, seven three zero three Amber Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, three four six five three. Dear Pasco Commissioners, the common factor in all the two thousand fifteen sixteen stormwater drainage board initiated PVAS assessment subdivision, Crane's Roost, Lakewood Villas, Lake Whirl, Acres, et cetera, all have drainage issues that resulted in road flooding. To impass, to impose a PVAS on residents before understanding and properly addressing the flooding issues is putting the cart before the horse. In the March twenty-third board meeting, flooding from road drainage and water basin were both discussed. However, flooding due to water diverted into the subdivisions from other property development was not. Cedar Lake was designed to manage the water in Lakewood Villas, not runoff from new, newer construction around Lakewood Villas. Development east of the Lakewood, Massachusetts road entrance are about to, uh, channel even more water into Lakewood. Not only was this land allowed to be built up two feet higher than the adjacent Lakewood land, there are two pitiful little drainage ditches also back up to those homes. Water overflows from these ditches onto the properties into their homes, washing out fences and flooding the corner of Runnel and Cedar Drive. And there is an image titled Flood Area Runnel and Cypress Drive of roads. Um, underneath it, Lakewood, an assessed road marked in black. Underneath that in yellow highlight, Christina Fitzpatrick's home marked by the yellow gold star, uh, provides the address. And then in green, or in green highlight, Jenny's house marked by the green star on the map above has not been livable since Irma largely due to mold from the floodwaters. Insurance would not cover their, their damage nor county or state assistance. Her veteran husband has passed away February twenty twenty-one without being able to return to their home due to mold from the flooding. There's additional photos, one titled Jenny's House, another is development behind Jenny's House. Underneath two, Lakewood Villas was developed in the late nineteen sixties and seventies and Cedar Lake was built to manage the water drainage in Lakewood Villas. County crews showed up four weeks ago to stake out drainage lines and cut down trees throughout Lakewood properties to drain the two pitiful drainage ditches from the, from this development into Cedar Point Lake. Their water should not be Lakewood's problem. And then there's two additional pictures, Runnel and Cedar is the caption underneath it. Other land development outside Lakewood that are also diverting water into Cedar Lake from Cypress Knoll development. And the Lakewood Acres farmland diverting water, silt and debris into fresh spring that feed Cedar Lake. What was once a beautiful, clear spring fed creek is now a clogged, overgrown mess during heavy rains. Some pumps are used to pump even more water into this creek from the Cypress Knoll and Lakewood Acres Farm. This flooding, this floods property adjacent to the creek and raises the Cedar Lake level. And that is the time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Did I say?
No, I had my hand up too.
Ms. Fitzpatrick, just.
I was holding off earlier, but, okay.
The biggest concerns that night was the stormwater, which is gonna be addressed. They were also concerned about Newport Ritchie wanting to implement sewer, which there is no funds right now at this time. It will be five to seven years until that is addressed. If they come in and install sewer, they will have to replace the roads where they were to what we have just done. Um, and again, that evening, they said even if there was a continuance, it would be beneficial. This is putting the project off till fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So that's two, three years before the roads are even gonna get fixed. And then they won't be assessed taxes until twenty twenty-four? Do you know?
That's right.
Till twenty twenty-four, so then they'll pay in their twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five year. So I wanted to make sure I did address all of their concerns. And again, also speeding was another one of their concerns that I wanna make sure. So the stormwater project is already in the way and I'm repeating. So again, I know they say it's one point three million. Their PVASs are thirty-seven oh seven per ERU. Other areas were seventy-eight hundred for a ERU. So I wouldn't look at the overall number, I would look at the individual number per the ERU because it's coming in lower than Crane's Roost that was at seventy-eight hundred, just for one ERU. And thirty-seven hundred over ten years is about twenty-five. And it can add up, but at this time, there's no other projects that are gonna be implemented in the next few years.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moore.
I'd like to go after Mr. Moore.
Okay.
I'm just going along with Commissioner Mariana, we stayed this in the past. And he, I've already made a statement that if, if this, if this is a, a, uh, board initiated, and I hate to say board initiated because I'm not initiated, but I'm part of this board, um, any more board initiative PVASs, I'm not, I'm, I'm a no. I mean, I mean, let the people vote, that's what I've said before. If they get the majority, they get the majority. If not, you know, I mean, they, they don't want it.
So.
The majority.
In two years from now.
Let me finish. If the majority doesn't want it, they don't want it. There could be, they could have eighty, ninety, a hundred and something people here today making that same statement, but instead the citizen decided to go door to door, they let her speak for them. I mean, I did get another email, I think we probably all did, um, a little while ago from a citizen. So it could have been like before and they could have had, you know, a line out the door, but they decided not to do that and let her speak on their behalf. I mean, I mean, there's nothing else for me to say. You know, it's just the bottom line is the, oh, it's not, it wasn't a fifty-one fifty or, or anything like that. It was a, oh, we're in majority that says they don't want it. So why force it on them? It just ma, and to me, it makes absolutely no sense.
I have the floor after him.
So, yeah, it ma, it makes no sense. So I'm definitely a no vote.
Um, I wanna ask the woman to come back up to the mic for a second, please. Um, and so my brother just bought a house on Crest Knoll. He just moved from Gulf Harbors there and he bought it so that he can take his RV and park it there. Um, so did you live there before it was, uh, before they chip sealed it?
I did.
And what was your road like before they chip sealed it?
Exactly like it is right now because they missed Cedar Point Drive completely with the chip and seal.
What about the rest of the roads? Why did they come in and chip seal it?
They were a little rougher than what they are now, but, but my, my other concern is the oversight of these projects. If they, there was no oversight over the chip and seal project or the little pebbles would have been sealed correctly in some of these courts. And our court would have been chipped and sealed, but there was no oversight, no contractor oversight. So the, the contractor failed miserably. So here we're talking one point four million dollars. And is there gonna be contractor oversight? Is the job gonna be done right? And are we gonna get our money's worth? Cause we sure didn't get it under the chip and seal.
I'm sorry, you didn't even pay for the chip and seal. The rest of us paid for your chip and seal. You all paid nothing.
We were told it was BP oil spill funds.
Right, it was a gift to the whole, all the citizens of Pasco County. And because your roads were so bad, you got a gift from the citizens of Pasco County under the condition that this board came in and did a board initiated PVAS. And now some of the members are going against that, which to me is.
The residents are going against it.
But.
The residents.
You know, we have very difficult jobs up here and sometimes we have to make decisions that people are upset about. But one of them is our, is responsibility. And if, now maybe I'm wrong, but I, I went and visited those roads with the governor uh, and, and tried, we tried to get FEMA to help us pay for the roads uh, because they were so bad and they wouldn't do it because they were in such bad condition. Here's my concern. My brother just bought a house there so he could drive his RV and park it in, in, in his yard. If, if the people, if we're gonna be so irresponsible and not do our job, which is to make sure these people are gonna have safe roads, we, we know what's gonna happen when a chip sealed road fails. And I, well, I'll ask the expert, when a chip sealed road fails, it's lime rock mush. And when lime rock mush gets wet, you're not gonna have, be able to drive on it. You're not gonna have mail, you're not gonna have garbage, you're not gonna have school buses. This is what happened to those neighborhoods before. So I feel it's my responsibility. No one wants to pay for their road. I have two roads that are gonna have. I have two homes in the county, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to pay for two PVASs because my, both my roads are failing. I don't want to. I would rather have someone else pay for it. But I feel that's our responsibility as commissioners as to, what are we gonna do when they can't, when we have a big storm and they can't drive to their house?
That, but the roads.
You know that's coming. You know it's coming.
No, the roads are not in that condition right now.
They are. Ask the experts.
They're not.
Well, you know what? It looks good because you have this thin layer that looks pretty. But I can see where the lime rock is coming up all over your roads. And I can see it where the commissioner showed us where the road is gone. You're, you're driving in the lime rock sub base.
There's six or seven areas that need repaired. These residents have called for repairs and many residents' requests have not been fulfilled.
So I, I would say that if you're not willing to help, if you don't want your road to be fixed with, with full depth reclamation, which is a cement based road, so even if it floods, you won't have any issue with your road. I don't think we should go into these roads anymore and, and try and fix them. I, I just think this is your shot. I just.
Can.
It's irresponsible of us to not fix this. This is, this is one storm away from a disaster, in my opinion. If you're, and if you have flooding, oh my gosh, if you have a flood, that's gone, that road is gone. That, that lime rock explodes like, like yeast, you know, when you're making bread, it's just gonna, it's gonna be gone.
Can PVAS be terminated? That was the other request that.
What does that mean? What do you mean by that?
To cancel it.
The whole, the whole methodology of PVAS.
Well, we, we are talking about that because, listen, none of us like doing this.
And the residents don't like it either.
I hate this process. I really do.
Everybody does.
It's very difficult. Um, but what, but when it's terminated, something else will be in its place. You will be paying for every road in the county to be fixed, not just your own, but it'll be a smaller amount. And, and that is how most counties do it. But I, and we're working on it, but I think we're years away from that. Really, my concern for you and for my brother is that your road isn't gonna make it another year.
I'm not concerned on that based on.
I know, but the experts are.
I've walked every single road in this area.
Experts are very concerned for you, but that's my soapbox. So I'm concerned for you.
You can go sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fitzpatrick?
I don't know if I need to wrap up. Okay, so this is a perfect example. It was at the end of Cypress Drive and Runnel that the road looked like this all the way across the street. There was a car stuck in the road. The mailman carrier could not get down the roads. And if the road is already looking like this at the end of the street, I'm concerned that's not gonna last. And that is what it looks like today. Now.
We'll call for the vote because you got, you got two that said nay.
Hold on.
No already, and you just make a motion and see if you got the votes.
The roads had cars in them. They were concerned. I'm trying to make sure I address every one of their concerns that they had that night because they said there is no, um, we do have new construction, new contractors. There will be oversight over the roads. This is gonna happen in two years. They won't even start the project for two years away. And that was one of the concerns is they wanted to make sure it was postponed.
And that was one of the concerns is they wanted to make sure it was postponed until these issues were addressed. Now, these stormwater issues are being addressed today. They have the stakes in the grounds, they're planning on putting, handling that. And then, so they have the study. And then you're ta- mentioning the affordability of it. Right now, it's only, I can't say only. Right now, it's 3,707 dollars. And that can be put over a 10-year span. Now, other communities.
You have to add interest to that.
What?
There'll be interest added to that.
3.25% at this point, correct. And other communities cost 7,800. So even if we went ahead and averaged them all together, one concern is this may make the P Vass go up because other communities are 7,800. And then who's going to discrepancy, who's going to go first? Are we going to go put in Moon Lake for 4 million, for 40 million dollars first? And then the other roads that could definitely use it, that used to be paved, are not going to be able to get P Vassed when it's time for them to get P Vassed. Because we're going to spend 40 million in other areas.
Right. But in the P Vass system and ordinance we have to work with, it doesn't work that way. You don't add them together and divide it and all that. Each one stands on its own, so the work has to be done. So we've discussed this pretty well, so.
Ms. Chairman?
Would, I would have to see like some kind of a great even analysis.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I, I see one resident that I know in the background there. I don't know if we finished with public comment with everybody that wanted to speak?
No, the lady spoke, that was the only one we had signed.
Okay, okay, just want to make sure. All right, so let, let me say, um, you know, when we look at what happened five years ago, the board made a big investment to a lot of communities. One of the big issues was stormwater. And I want to say our stormwater team, this whole board has done a phenomenal job in fixing stormwater, so much so, I think this year we're up 13% in ratings, which is outstanding. So we've addressed a lot of things. From as I see it, we haven't done anything here yet. There could be a septic sewer program coming in still, which could benefit these people, which would mean we'd have to tear up the road again. But when I've got citizens, when we always look for petition leader, when we do one of these paving assessments, we look for petition leader to go out there. Well, this petition leader on this went out there. And out of 215 people she talked to, she says only five went against it? That's a pretty strong number.
Add my brother to that.
Okay, so this is.
Then it's falling apart as he drives in there every time.
If I could finish. When you look at that extraordinary set of numbers, to try to go force this on the people that say they don't want it, you're going to tell them what they're going to do with their property, with their benefits, how they're going to spend their money? I can't see how we can even go forward with it.
Okay.
What's the measure of the commissioners on this project?
Project, what was that, I'm sorry?
Do you want to make a motion to approve the P Vass in your district?
I would motion because looking at that, I can't.
All right, got a motion?
You can't.
You can't.
Oh, yeah, I can't, never mind.
Oh, and you can't vote.
Oh, you're in big trouble.
Yeah, I totally can't do it, so I don't even have to say. But I am, I, okay, I am truly.
They may have to lean on Mr. Steinsteiner to do another vote, so.
I am, I am truly concerned if this is what it looks like today, how those are going to last much longer.
Well, um, I'm going to say this without really knowing, but it seems like it's that way. There's, your motion has died for lack of.
Can I do a motion? Okay, can I do a motion to continue? Because the residents want to see the other projects completed. Once the other projects are completed, then I want to.
What other project?
They want to see their stormwater issue solved and resolved.
The best way to do that is bring that back to us once that stormwater is complete.
Can we continue this for a year?
No sense in leaving it like that, I don't believe.
So then, most likely with the construction costs.
Excuse me.
So most likely in the construction costs, the price and the fees are going to go up then.
It will. You're going to wait, they're still going up.
I would rather lock in at a lower rate, at a lower interest rate. Otherwise, if you push this off for two years and then come back.
And then wait 10 years to pay for it, it doesn't work that way.
Well, that's why I feel that it should go through today. Because those roads, if we cancel it today, if we even come back in two years from now, the construction rates are doubling 100%, they're going to 100% increase in lumber alone. And all the other construction fees are 6 to 8% every year.
We can't change that.
We can't change it, but this means that they're going to be probably charged, it could be twice as much.
Mr. Mariano?
Move to deny the paving assessment.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second to deny this project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the aye. All those opposed, like say?
Nay.
Okay. I believe I have it.
Extension. And one extension.
And one extension. And so it.
Was a nay.
This has died based on a 3-1 vote. And one extension, okay? Next is another P Vass. 65, P 65.
Yes, sir. Item P 65 was published in the Tampa Times on February 24th, 2021.
It's a call of Public Works. Um, this is Lake Warl Acres P Vass project. At the March 23rd meeting, the public, um, hearing was opened and continued to today, May 18, 2021. On April 26th, Commissioner Fitzpatrick had a committee meeting. And here's just some background information with regards to this project. This is a board initiated project. Um, this was as a result of the, um, temporary repairs to Storm Damage Road approved by the board back in 2017. There are two streets in this project, um, count to maintain pave, 91 lots involved for a 6.39 ERUs. Next, please. Estimated cost is 477,299. Maximum cost per E R U, 10,288. The discounted amount is 96,575. Uh, maximum cost after discount is 7,966.63. The annual installment over 10-year period and the interest rate is 3.25% interest. Next, please. This is a location map, the two roads in questions run north-south. And, um, next. And this is some condition of the roads, a couple weeks ago.
What number is this one?
This is 56, sorry, 65.
65, P 65.
He's 65.
Last item on the gym.
Show my photos.
Okay. Is that the white lime rock coming up on the road?
And the potholes, this is Scamia Drive.
It was before the last one.
This was done about the same time this other.
Yes, sir.
This almost looked like a gravel road, what it almost looked like.
But more of the chip seal is gone.
So Ainsley, are you going to take public comment? Because I have some questions for Ainsley.
I'll have to.
When's the right time for me to ask him?
Well, during the discussion, we are, we have anybody sign up for?
I have, um, no one on, no one submitted an email, no one on WebEx and no one signed up, so.
Okay, so we can have a discussion, period, so one public comment.
All right, so I actually have some issues on this one. I mean, I, I think we should, you know, I, I am.
No.
We made an agreement that we're going to do the board initiated P Vass. So of course, I'm going to stick with what I said I was going to do, even though they're hard votes before. But I have a little problem with this one on the methodology. And so, um, I think, I was, I was looking at some of the sites on here. And I'm sorry, I don't know what I do with my notes, but I went to one of the houses on Cameo. Because I was looking, I was looking at the, um, ownership, that's right, here. And so, for example, and I think I sent this to you and Mike, if you look at, um, five, um, let's see here, 8634, is that the ones? Um, or say 8646 and 8644. Or there's some others where you have, um, um, two, people are listed there twice. It, it's an, it's an odd development because it looks like they're little teeny tiny lots. And then people have built one house on like five lots.
Are you referring to the email you sent about the two parcels?
Yes, so then they are getting like five ERUs.
So.
So I think we need to fix that.
I responded to your, to your email with regards to those two parcels. Um, they are not combined, they are separate parcels, so they are separate assessments. The assessment is based on the size of the parcel and the zoning. So based, and I had staff recalculate that, and the calculation for those two parcels that you emailed me are correct. So although you may have, um, just a simple example. Um, I have one acre, you have one acre zone, yours is zoned for 10 units, mine is zoned for one. Your assessment will be greater than mine. Because it's based on the, the entitlement, what you can bill on.
No, I understand that, but there's only one house there. I, I went to the property appraiser's website and there's one house.
There's five lots.
It's not, it has nothing to do with the number of houses.
So they can downzone themselves.
It's not about.
If they want to downzone, they can downzone.
Yeah, because theirs is 7,900 each.
If they curious to downzone, they can downzone.
And it's one house. So it's one, it should be one E R U. And that's all over the place in there. So that's a problem.
Commissioner? Each unit's going to take an E R U.
No, no.
So, okay, I had someone address, a citizen address that, Commissioner Starkey. And they were actually, there was two ERUs on one lot. And it was told that they could rezone it.
Right.
But then they're not going to be allowed to ever build and it's going to depreciate their value. So if they want to convert it to one E R U, they can do that. But later on, they can't just keep flipping back and forth and later on and say, well, I want it to be five and I want to sell off each lot.
Yeah, so then, then they would have to, they would get assessed another E R U. Because we've had this happen in my district where there was someone on, say, a five acre lot. And, um, they were getting hit with five ERUs and we told them they could downzone it to one. And they'd only pay one, but if they ever wanted to split it, they would get hit with an assessment.
That's true.
But what, maybe I'm wrong, but when I looked at that house, it was one house on like four lots.
Yes, Commissioner, so just one comment on that. So if the entitlement is, say, four dwellings, four houses, but they only have one existing, the methodology allows for a reduction because they do not have the additional three. So we're not fully assessing them for four ERUs. There's a reduction.
Okay, there are a lot of people in here with mul- with mul- with addresses that are right next to each other on the street with multiple assessments. It's, it's all over the place in here.
We follow the methodology of policies and guidelines. And for the two examples you sent to me, I had staff recheck, they're correct, and I responded to your email.
I think, I think, you know, we made this mistake in Aristida. That some, you thought that there was, there was, uh, in the plat, an ability to have larger lots, but originally, but then they were all downsized, but they still got, some people got assessed for multiple ERUs, even though the, the homeowners association rules said only one house per lot. And so it was, remember, you had to throw out that first assessment.
This is exactly why the moment I got your email, I had staff double check it. So I'm comfortable with the calculations.
So you think that there's a house on 8526 and a house on 8536?
The two parcels that you sent to me, yes, there are.
There's two houses?
Yes. One is a mobile home and one is a more permanent structure.
Okay, and then that's the same all through here? With all these double trouble.
The only two I double checked was the two that you sent to me, Commissioner.
Okay, all right. But I don't think it's going to go through anyway. I can vote on this one.
I'll make a motion to deny.
I'm in because I've had.
Do I have a second?
We only had one person here last time. And rejecting, although I had a room full of people here that night. Now, my two concerns are Worl Drive and Adonis are both dirt roads. And have you been able to, my photos were right below the other photos from Cypress Drive. Because my meeting was with Lake Worl and then I had a meeting that night right after.
My brother is very bummed. If he can't drive his mobile home onto his house after the storm.
Okay. So my biggest concern, that's it, if you want to stay there for a second. This is on Broad Street and Adonis. Now, Adonis is. An unpaved road. All of the dirt from Adonis and Worl Drive run east to the end. And then they back up everywhere. So if you want to move forward. And then I think this is Worl Drive. So I actually had two citizens that said they own property on both north and south sides, sides of Worl Drive. And they actually wanted to see if they could get zones, uh, transferred.
They have two units.
Vacated.
Vacated.
They wanted the road vacated, but that.
Can't happen.
That's, that's not, yeah, that's not part of this.
So, but that being said, they wanted to pave it. So I would be okay going through with the project if Adonis was included. Because you have all of that debris and they have to go out and grade this all the time. So if they're going to continuously have to go out and grade Adonis, I just have concerns with that. Now, if Lake Worl wants to go and pave theirs, so it doesn't, their dirt doesn't run down the road, that'd be a different story. But if you keep going through the photos, because that road isn't included, this road isn't even included in the paving. But all of their dirt ends up at the bottom. If you want to keep moving forward, please.
Is this an alley? Was that an alley?
That's Worl Drive. So if you have your, this page out.
This is not part of a P Vass?
This, okay, so this neighborhood is part of the P Vass, but Worl Drive, this road specifically in the middle right here is not.
Does not cover.
Isn't covered, but the res- those two residents said they would be willing to pave it. Okay, if you want to keep going. Now, on the other side of this road, it runs down into this drain. And then they're creating a, well, if you go back. They were creating, is that swale on the other side? A burn. And then the water would go into the lake. And then that was all.
Is that the road? Is that the road?
Okay, that's going in to where the burn would be and then into the lake in the back. If you want to keep going forward, we should be on Cameo at this next point. This is Cameo.
Is that the lime rock coming out of the road?
Uh, yes. There's, there's nothing there. If you want to continue. So they actually put pipes underneath in two of these areas to get water from one side of the road to the other, that was permitted. But this is their road. And if you want to keep going north on Cameo, this is Cameo and Sunrise. And that's their road. And you can keep going. I went up through Cameo. And then this must be a, no, this is still on Cameo. This is all the dirt that comes from Adonis and sits on Cameo. And when you back up, you're actually going to see the tilt. Because back then, they had the roads that were inverted. And then the water went underneath and then it went off to the side. Now all the roads are opposite of inverted. You can keep going, but this is on Adonis and Cameo. If you want to go back to that photo. And then that's the curve, but this is still the road that's getting paved. So if you want to keep moving forward. But that's my concern is Adonis is, all this dirt is still going to continue to flood down and get stuck on this road. Because we're not, Adonis isn't even included. Although they said Adonis to be included would be cost prohibitive. So we're going in doing part of a project here.
Maybe not.
Well, it's a start.
They're all going to be dirt roads after one storm.
If you want to keep going.
Is anybody signed up to speak on the side?
I had the one gentleman that said that he actually would have preferred to have Worl Drive. But they also said that was prohibitive, cost prohibitive. But they were willing to pave it themselves if we would vacate it to them. But they were willing to pave it themselves if we would vacate it to them. Because they're the only two owners on the north and south side of Worl and no one else has access to those roads. But that is, that's their road, right there.
Pleasure of the board.
Move to approve the P-VAS?
Second.
And there's, there's no one objecting?
Um, didn't Commissioner Moore have a motion?
Well, I mean, I motioned to deny earlier, but.
No one seconded it. It died for a lack of second.
We didn't have a second at the time.
Okay.
I don't think I was listening.
Thank you probably.
Well, I was checking the charts on the ERUs. There was one.
We didn't get, we didn't get a second on Mr. Morse, but now we have a motion.
You have a second on staff's intelligent, expert approval?
And I think it would really fix Cameo.
More discussion, please? More discussion?
There's no one opposing it.
Not much more.
No, I understand that, but I'm listening to Commissioner Fitzpatrick talking about Adonis Road. I'm listening to about Worl Drive. What about Fair Avenue? What's the deal with that road?
I'm interested.
Is that a dirt road? It's not in the list. I'm just wondering why.
Probably not a dirt road.
Just to remind the board, the roads that are included in the projects are the roads that were chip sealed. So we did not include any other pro, any other roads in this project. So we were directing the roads that were chip sealed should be brought back to be board initiated.
So here's my, here's my problem with forcing just with what's done here. You haven't got any objections, completely different from the last one we just had, right? Dramatically different scenario. We know we're not going to go do the neighborhood the best way we can possibly do it. I don't know why we just don't pull it back, go do all the roads, go out to the residents, do it, but get a petition leader out there. I'm sure you can get one. And let's try to do it all right.
They'll deny that.
By the ordinance. You're saying do it by the ordinance?
Yeah, the regular way, by the ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
It's not going to go through.
All right, but I've got a.
Half of the roads are flooded and half of them.
Yeah. I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I did. Oh, no, I made the motion.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick. Mr. Fitzpatrick. I'm looking up that street.
All those oppose?
Isn't somebody not eligible to vote on this?
Nay.
No.
They voted.
I thought you said there was somebody not able to vote on this one.
No.
Oh, I was.
Full board vote.
Full board vote.
No, I know, okay, that's fine. No, I don't know now. I thought you said, I thought you said earlier that next one was.
Well, let's do that again. I have a motion and second to approve the project. All those in favor of the project going forward, say aye.
Aye.
All those do not approve that, nay.
Nay.
Nay. So it fails to pass 3-2. Thank you. All right, that includes everything on the agenda except for some very short comments.
It failed for no second.
No, we don't need a motion to draw.
No, no.
Ms. Chair.
Staff's recommendation.
Clarification on one of the continuances, we need to add a sentence to it.
Do one now?
On one of the continuances, we only continued the transmittal hearing. We need to continue the adoption hearing as well. Terry can go in detail about that.
Okay.
When will their, this water mitigation project be done?
We can.
We will know.
Issue that the administrator brought up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, item P-62, which was a comprehensive plan amendment for CPAL 2014, Central Pasco Employment Village. There, the motion was to, the applicant requested a continuance of the transmittal hearing from today to June 8. 1:30 PM in Dade City, which that motion was passed earlier. There was a second motion also to continue the adoption hearing of the, of the same project from the July 6 BCC meeting to the August 10 BCC meeting in anticipation of the motion to move it to June 8.
Well, but that wasn't scheduled for today to be heard.
The transmittal has today.
So how are you, how are you continuing an item that was not before the board?
Because the transmittal has to occur before the adoption.
I understand that, but you're continuing, you're asking the board to continue adoption and that was never before the board today.
So you're saying that you can't move a motion that's in the future out?
Right. You're going to continue it the day you advertised it to be heard.
Very well.
Is that re-advertised?
No, it, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing Terry say is that that is scheduled for a July 6 hearing. That's what it was advertised for.
Correct.
That's the day he's going to have to continue it to the August date he wants. He can't do it now. I mean, what, what happens is they publish it on the July agenda to continue to August and it gets continued then. But there's been no advertising to the public that it's going to be heard today. So you can't.
Can't hear it.
You can't do anything with it today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Understandable. All right. Nice try. It just doesn't work that way, so. Okay. All right. We're going to go to old business.
All right.
And it can be very short-lived, it'll be fine.
I will try to talk.
Because I have a meeting I'm late for right now.
You still have public comments from this morning.
I will try to talk, I will try to talk fast.
Hold a minute, we got about 12 or 13 emails that have to be read in.
I have to leave at 3:45.
Well, then we get through this and then you can read them because I.
Yeah.
Because she has to leave. Doesn't matter when you do them.
Yeah, it doesn't.
We can.
This is old business.
Okay, we'll do this, but let's move it through. I'm late for a meeting.
Okay.
Because of a meeting.
So I'll be, I'll talk really fast here. And I think you have a video queued up. It's only going to be 40 seconds. I'm not playing the whole thing. That's okay. Few things. Great event, obviously, by the TDC and EDC. All of us were there that evening. Just for the public, May 6, the Pasco EDC and the Florida Sports Coast held their joint awards event. Extraordinary event. It was at Advent Health Center Ice. So thanks to all involved. Had the honor of surprising, it was pretty cool to surprise Congressman Bill Arakis with the TDC Chairman's Choice Award for all his years of work supporting travel and tourism. It was a great partnership. Again, congratulations to all. I will go a little faster. Just, and everybody here saw it, but just for the public view, if you can play that 40 seconds of the Florida Sports Coast and Pasco EDC video, it's pretty cool. We'll just do the intro.
You see all of that? You know what that is? That's opportunity. You probably don't know who I am, and that's okay. You probably don't know a lot about Pasco County either. From country to a nature-rich coastline, Pasco County, also known as experienced Florida's sports coast, has a little bit of something for everybody. Let's get down to business, specifically your business. We are a right-to-work state with a pro-business government that offers low operating costs and no personal state income tax.
It would be amazing.
I'd be like really dead already. Heart attack.
That's our stop. Don't worry, it gets better.
That was great.
So it's a great video, but the public, you can go ahead and go on either the EDC or the Florida Sports Coast YouTube channels and watch the remainder of the video. Again, in the essence of time, it's another five minutes, so thanks for showing that. Another great thing going on tourism, Tampa Bay Pro Combine is June 3 through June 5. It's going to be at the Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus of Pasco County. You're going to have NBA players and other people trying to go pro. You'll have scouts there, you'll have coaches. A number of people that are going to be there. Again, a great event that's going to happen here at the Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus of Pasco County. The Combine, it's going to, Tampa Bay Pro Combine. Again, you'll have people, you know, top athletes from all over the nation that'll be there. Great to see that happening too. And part of the reason they created that event, it was a, if I'm not correct, in Portsmouth, the Portsmouth Invitation Tournament in Virginia had canceled again. And that's the pre-draft event. It's been around for 67 years. Since that was canceled, we got to reap the benefits for it. So congratulations to our tourism department. Great event. And one update on the TDT collections, quick update on that. We're now over a year since COVID-19. Obviously started and we have some of those year-over-year comparisons. The second half of March 2020 is when tourism and travel really started to take a hit, as we probably all know. And then the March 2021 tourist development tax collections were up almost 40% from March of 2020. And April 2021 numbers aren't in yet, but we, obviously, we expect those to be even a larger percentage jump from April of 2020. So that's great to see tourism coming back and coming back in a, in pretty hot and heavy here in Pasco County. And the last thing, I will be brief. Since we're having a lot of these debates when it comes to the P-VAS. I think it'd behoove us to not, I'll make a motion actually too. That no more forced P-VAS unless there's a petition to vote from the residents. I think we just need to stop it. We need to get rid of it moving forward. I don't know where the chairman went, but, oh, there he is. Oh, signing, signing documents. But, you know, I think we're going to continue, continue down the same road. We, you've heard from, obviously, a couple commissioners. Saw the votes went today. We're putting staff through a lot of work. I would think you would have nodded your heads just to see a lot of these come forward and, and fail. So going forward, my opinion again is no more forced P-VASs. Bring it to a vote. Let's do it the way we've always done it.
So I think that looks bad because the last P-VASs are me.
No, so I, I.
And you're getting me out of it.
We have had instances where we have had close votes on P-VASs that they may have failed by a close vote. And then when we looked at it, it was because they were landlords and, and with a lot of renters on that road. So I'm, I'm thinking of Lake Buena Vista that hasn't been paved in 60 years, or Buena Vista Lane. And the Alex Pappas came here and said she, you know, they're ruining their trucks. They already went and got rid of their cars and are driving trucks to get to their million-dollar homes at the end of Buena Vista. That's a, a mobile home park. But they can't, they can't even have company anymore. So who knows, who knows what that one's going to look like and, and. So there have been times when there's been close votes and we've gone ahead and done a board initiated. So I don't want to take that away from us. Maybe the ones you don't want to do are the ones that are the chip seal ones where people think they have a great road because it looks okay. So let's maybe not do any more chip seal initiated, but let's see what votes look like on, on a.
Mr. Chairman. I don't think you can, I don't think you can amend the ordinance by motion.
I vote, I don't think it works.
And so I don't think the motion's in order. But on the other hand, you all have to authorize staff to do a board initiated to begin with. These were all authorized by the board.
Well, I understand that, but I just don't want to go down the road anymore. I'll let, and Dan wants to talk about it too.
That's where you would stop it.
Mr. Viles, you had something you wanted to bring up possibly?
I was just going to address Commissioner Starkey's point. You know, that, those had a petition where we went out. And I think in those instances, if, we would investigate that and then bring to the district commissioner kind of the results of the position and see what the district commissioner wanted to do with it. I think that's what we were doing. But those had a petition and a petition leader versus no petition and no petition leader.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up, Mr. Steisler. So you said amend the ordinance. So I guess my question is, how does it amend the ordinance just to, we still have the piece of that's processed, but we're not moving forward with any additional board initiated?
Because the ordinance provides for board initiated.
So we would have to amend the ordinance?
In effect, in effect, you would be taking that section out of the ordinance by your.
So, oh, okay, so let me change my motion so we don't sit here and debate this all day long. I'll amend my motion to state that making a motion for, or I guess, or giving direction or make a motion, whichever I need to do, to bring back and amend the current ordinance through the public hearing process to pull out, I got to finish, pull out forced P-VASs. So then we could have our debate at that time instead of having it here because.
Or do you just want to direct the administrator not to bring forward board-initiated P-VASs?
That's really not, doesn't have any teeth to it really, because that means any commissioner can go back to the county administrator and say, can you bring this forward? You know what I mean?
Accept its board action, but.
I mean, it is, I mean.
I still don't think that you need to take away things that we have the ability to do by the board's actions. And I think we're all smart enough to do it the right way when we're asked or we're faced with an issue before us that comes before us in the future, to where we don't need to do that kind of action to, you're, you're trying to keep yourself from doing what's right. So we don't need to do that. We just need to do what's right for the citizens at the time. And I think when it comes forward, we're all smart enough to handle that without having a motion like this, in my opinion.
Listen, will the board, you know, I mean, we have a second, but if three people want to keep continuing with it, that's fine. Again, I'm not going to keep battling it. I just, you know, I, you know, my feeling on forced P-VASs and how I state, I'm going to vote on every single one of them moving forward, so.
But if the roads are.
Let me give you an example. We brought these and asked staff to bring these to us. And we've turned now three or four of these down because we didn't think it was right. I mean, we know whether it's right or not.
Right.
We approved seven of them.
There's no need to debate anymore. We're done. So, I mean, seriously, we can move on because I, I got a second on a motion that I can't move forward to amend the ordinance, so it is where it is.
There's only two left.
Well, no, that's two left that are coming before us that we know of now. It doesn't mean that more will come in the future, so.
No, I think what she means is there's two of the chip seal storm damage road.
Chip seal ones, gotcha.
But if you have roads that are in that disrepair and it's going to impede and disallow male carriers to go down the road.
There's no debate anymore. I withdrew my motion. Done.
Okay.
The motions are drawn.
We're, you're done with your, Adam?
Yep, done.
Okay.
Okay, a couple months ago, I showed you guys some photos and an email from a gentleman whose life is really being challenged by the lighting, the backyard lighting of neighbors. And so we had asked for, and we had board consensus that we would adjust the ordinance for lighting. And I just wanted to know where we are with that because he's asking a couple months later if there's any kind of timeline so they can enjoy their, their backyard again. So if someone could let me know where that is in the ordinance process, is that going to be when we do one of those little catch-ups or?
I think that I had said I, I would, that the county attorney's office would, would do it. Although I'm not, we'll get you, I will email the board and answer on that question whether it has to go through the LDC process or whether it can be done as an ordinance, ordinance review process.
All right, thank you. Secondly, I, I just want to say with the comments from the woman with vacation rental, or I think that was a woman, yeah. I have felt that all along that, that we, that you saw all the little blue dots. I can tell you, they're all over my neighborhood in Gulf Harbors. And I don't think we can code and force our way out of the new reality of short-term rental. So in my opinion, we need to, we need to have rules in place that we can enforce. But we can't enforce anything when we're not, when they're not allowed. So I think our, our short-term rental ordinance needs to go and we need to put rules in place. Fire safety. Anyway, I can't remember what the word is, but we need to manage them and right now we're not. So I think we should talk about short-term rentals.
And Commissioner Starkey.
Thank you very much.
If I could, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Tag with that just because it's been, I've been loaded with emails and I think we all have going through. And it is something we need to address, so I think you're right. We need to scrap the ordinance, start afresh and start allowing people to do this.
Oh, the rules.
As quick as we can.
Yeah.
And set a new set of rules. I thought we had something coming back before us, no? No. So if you scrap the ordinance, you scrap it, period.
Right, you lose our grandfather.
This is, this is another one of those that the legislature has taken away your ability to adopt a new one, which is why we sort of have stayed with, with what we've got. I don't know what areas you'll end up being able to regulate, but that is a policy decision for the board. Board can, you know, we can decide to get out of that business.
Can we amend?
If I could finish?
No.
Go a little further? Because I, I think what we need to do is, we do, do need to make it, get off the 31 days, forget the 51%. And let's get back to where people can do it for, I guess, not less than six days.
I don't even know where that comes from, but we can regulate not, it's not working right now.
I, I agree. So maybe we need to do an agenda item and let's, let's have a discussion on it.
It's a workshop or something, yeah.
Tourism involved.
Yep, sounds good. Yeah, we definitely need them involved.
So let's, let's bring something back to us, maybe quick as we can.
You mentioned grandfathered in. If Commissioner Mariano was able to, we could amend something and then we can always change it down the road and then unamend it instead of just taking it away altogether.
No. You've got a 1999 ordinance that predated when the, when the legislature changed the rules and said anybody who had.
Oh, yeah.
An ordinance in place at the time that they, they passed their, their base, they passed their legislation, could keep it. But once you start playing with it, you lose that grandfather. Can you bring us what the effect would be if we want with just the state regulations so we can all look at it ahead of time before the next meeting? Awesome, thank you. Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. So I would like to address Ross Lane and Little Road. They're re-channeling the traffic at the intersection of Ross Lane and Little Road, just a mile. We had a couple citizens speak on this today. It's right next to the VA. That is the neighborhoods only in and out. I guess there used to be an out in Tanglewood, but that's someone's driveway, so it is blocked off. I don't know if you can get to that part of it.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick, are you going to talk about the, the vent on the 20th?
Gavey Shaw?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. So they have no other way to get in or out of their neighborhood, so several of the residents have been informed that they were supposed to be getting a traffic signal. So when I'm looking at, I don't know if you want to skip forward? Okay, that's just them doing the work. I guess the work took less than just a few days to complete the work, but they made it to where on Ross Lane, you can't make a left out onto Little Road. My question was to staff is, when does the veterans' facility, when do they plan on opening, and was this median done prematurely? Because they have access on the south side and the north side of the building, and if you keep going further, if it only took a few days, then why did they not wait until later on down the road, instead of people, citizens living in this neighborhood that have trailers that have to come out, make a right-hand turn, go all the way down, try to make a U-turn on Little Road to go sell? If you want to keep moving forward, please, thank you. Let me keep going forward. Oh, do you have this? So on this that I have in front of me, do you have? Okay, so on the plan that I have, I also have a list of seventy-nine, seventy-two households that have signed the petition, and since we're listening to our citizens, and we're gonna use that, I have over, I'm not sure how many, but there are over seventy-two households that have signed a petition that they don't feel comfortable having this, and I'm gonna read this, "We, the people, as the undersigned homeowners of Crescent Forest Division, Ross, Gunshot Lane, Tanglewood and surrounding areas reject the county's proposal of any future redevelopment. One hundred and eighty apartment units, no buffer." So basically, the closing of the access to Little Road South, routing all traffic north and eliminating the traffic signals that were promised years ago, just because the developer wants to save money, shall create a nightmare situation. Okay. So again, on this sheet, it shows that there's supposed to be a light here, so people, citizens can turn left and right. Now, the other thing that I was discussing earlier today is, if it's, and the citizen was here, if it is truly adding two or five minutes where they have to go down, make a U-turn, this is the veterans' hospital? And you have everyone in that neighborhood, if an emergency vehicle needs to come out, now they're getting, they can't just go right and make a left, they come out of their neighborhood and make a left. Now they're adding two, five minutes onto their travel time, which can be life-threatening and can save someone's life if they need to get to that closest hospital, and I would assume that closest hospital would be Trinity at this point, or Madison, and they can no longer make a left-hand turn at that light. So I find it very concerning that this median is going in so quickly, and then especially on this proposal, if they're having an access road in the back, well, then maybe they shouldn't be closing off the left-hand turn lane until that access road can take them out and make a left onto Little Road. So again, does anybody need copies of the petitions? Do you have these?
I own.
Okay, well, can I pass these around?
I received one.
You received one? Okay.
They dropped them off for all of us.
So that was, I would like to have an update about making sure they have access in and out of their neighborhood, since that's their only entrance. Secondly, I was gonna mention the Tampa Bay Pro Combine, I did get to go to the event at Advent Health Sports Center at Wiregrass Ranch in Pasco County. It's a beautiful facility. They were talking about, they have the Chicago, which is based out of a, one's based, you have Chicago and Virginia, one is based out of a church, and one was based out of a high school gymnasium, and they were looking to bring that basketball pro-combine event here, but not just one time, but in future years, and also it can lead into a six-week training camp. So they're really looking forward to coming to Pasco County, and the facility, if you haven't been there, is very amazing. You have the basketball courts on each side, there's twelve volleyball hoops, you have the weight room in the middle, the everything. So if you haven't been out there, I would definitely recommend going there. Of course, it's June second to the fifth, and there's gonna be television, radio, webcasts, and there's Darryl Hepburn, which towers over me completely, even in my heels. And lastly, well, not lastly, but the third thing was the National Day of Prayer. I was fortunate to be able to attend this event, I know Commissioner Starkey and Mariano were there, and I would like to see, be able to make sure we can host this event in future and upcoming years. I also attended the E D C celebration with everyone, and I was able to speak with the keynote speaker, Mike Rayburn. He had spoke about what if, I kind of converted it to how can you make the impossible possible? So it was a very good speech. Lastly, I would like to let everyone know, we're having the Commissioner baby shower. It is on Friday at two o'clock, two o'clock at Starkey Market, and anything that's brought will be distributed to Sun Coast Voices, so it will help the foster families in Pasco County. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Mariano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to touch on Ross Lane real quick as well, years ago, when the development was gonna come in, was approved, that light was part of, I think, that plan, so maybe when staff takes a look at that, let's go take a look at the approval and what we're supposed to get maybe for right-of-way or whatever contributions, whatever, but something may be helpful with that. I've got a one-time fix request for Vivian Lane, it's a B road, it's a five thousand dollar fix.
Motion in a second. Call this in favor.
Can we discuss, what is it? I'm sorry.
It's a road project that just needs fixed. Sometimes we have a road project in your district, you'll bring it up and say, it's not ready for a P Vase, but they want to do some fixing.
County right-of-way, non-maintained road, a B road.
Is that public property, private property?
It's gotta be public property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No, thank you for explaining.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed, four zero.
Okay. And I'm glad we covered those vacation rentals, that was a big topic, it was gonna come up. I'd like to have maybe Dan and Mike talk about the dredging as far as, we did have that agenda item that, sorry everybody, in Sea Forest and Landings, it was a little change in plan from one step to another step about who could be included, who wouldn't be included, who was done before, which would be easier or not, so they've got some ideas how we can actually take this forward, so, Dan, if you would?
Sure, sure, Commissioner. Yes, sir, so we pulled the item off the agenda today because we thought we were gonna be able to use one source of funding, and we found out we can't, so we were gonna have to default back to the general fund. We didn't want to do an out-of-cycle request, we're right in the middle of the budget development process, so we recommend to the commissioner, just let us work through the development process, and depending on how the capital funds work out, those funds may be available to go to this project, and so you'd see that as part of the budget development over the next few months for this project. Parallel to that, you know, the commissioner's been working several different funding mechanisms to fund not only some of the upfront costs, but also the long-term maintenance, and kind of, we've been talking around several options, and I think one of the options we've kind of landed on, kind of as a recommendation, we'd like the board authorization to explore more, is an M S B U over the coastal properties to develop not just, maybe an initial, you know, initial payment to help with the one-time dredging costs, but also a long-term maintenance plan, so we don't get into situations we are with local roads. There's actually a maintenance plan and program in place, and so as part of that, I think we'd like the board to say, yes, Public Works, go work on that, and we'll walk you through as we hit various choke points or various decision points where we are in that process.
Yeah. I think that's pretty important that you look at it that way, because that's a big issue about any dredging projects, is where are you gonna get the money to do it? So I think that's...
And part of that is, you know, we would work with the county attorney's office too, that's part of the process.
Oh, yeah. I think, I agree with that, so. It's good, then. Mr. Moore?
Yeah?
You agree?
Sorry, I gotta get close to the mic, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm good. Okay, we just wanted to make sure that we kind of have board direction to do that, and we're kind of outworked on our own out there, so.
Right.
All right. And Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna bring up one thing with, we've heard from Deborah Leone from Gulf Harbors as well, they've done a lot of stuff internally on their own, is kind of where some of this started. I think they've spent, they raised about eighty-five thousand dollars of their own. They have a request in, and I can make it a board item to bring up the next meeting if it makes it easier, to actually what they're looking for is, looking for us to pay half if they pay half. So I don't want to really, at this late hour, to kind of go through the whole thing, but if you want, I can make an agenda item up and bring it back before the board so they can look at it as they go through the process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick question from the commissioner, since you're bringing this back, something that, are you thinking of maybe like restore money or something like that?
It could get reimbursed from that, well, actually maybe not from that, but it could be from the M S B U later on, we could actually pull back from that to go fund it. I will tell you that in all my talks with dredging up and down the whole coast, you know, Port Ritchie many years ago was gonna assess their people like a thousand dollars per household in the canals. Everyone I've talked about that same number was comfortable, and I think, you know, we could probably go along the same line here, but let me bring it back, just, I didn't want to address it because they were here to talk about it, so.
I mean, look at it at the same time we're looking at the M S B U, so.
Perfect.
It'd be good.
All right, and I would like to say, I want to thank my wonderful wife. I just celebrated my birthday, and she took me to a Beach Boys concert. It was over in the Ruth Eckard Hall, so it was a complete surprise. I want to say, a couple of years ago, we looked at getting the Beach Boys up at Sun West Park, and when we're up there, we're at the event, Marvelous Marvin was doing the promotions, and I got to him afterward, I says, Marvin, I says, do you think you can get the Beach Boys here to Pasco County up at Sun West, because they've helped with many events up there? And he says, yeah, I think we can, he says, well, whoever the coordinator you're gonna maybe talk to, give my card, I love to talk to him about it. So today we had a meeting about doing a festival coming up for Wellness in like November or December, depending, and it turns out that one of the gentlemen that's gonna, wants to put on a concert, actually has a connection with the Beach Boys too, so we're gonna try to make it, do the Beach Boys actually come to Pasco County, doing a beach concert right there. So it could get kind of interesting.
That's cool.
So, and that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Biles?
Yes, sir, just update on a couple of the federal initiatives we received last week. Some additional emergency rental assistance money, it was forty percent of our current, our new allocation under the A R P Act, so that was another four point three million for rental assistance that we'll put into the H A R T program and work both with our team and then our nonprofit partners on that. The guidelines came out for the A R P money, along with Treasury's actual math on the distribution amount, and Pasco County will get a little over one point seven million dollars for that. It's a hundred and fifty-one pages of guidelines, so we're kind of working our way through that right now, but it looks pretty positive on kind of plan that we thought we were gonna have, we were gonna, we'll be able to execute. And the last thing I have is general obligation bond projects are still moving forward, you know, Holiday, South Holiday will close on the twenty-second, but Centennial will open on the twenty-fourth, so we'll close one, but reopen another one right thereafter in the same area, and they're moving forward with speed as best they can through the process, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Steinsteiner? I don't have anything of general import at this late hour.
I understand, but I'll add something to you here in a minute.
I have a quick item just to inform the board. Mentioned probably late last year that our inspector general department is looking to be peer-reviewed, and that's the mark of excellence in the auditing world, and we have initiated that process. Some of you and your management team would have gotten an email from my inspector general saying that your name was provided to the outside auditing firm that is going to conduct the audit of the inspector general and to seek stakeholder feedback in regards to how the inspector general has conducted their audits, and not everyone will be selected, the individual will pick from the group. Her name is Erica Smith, and she is the deputy inspector general of audit and review for the New Orleans Office of Inspector General, and if you are selected, the interviews take place on July twelfth or July thirteenth, so I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, could you just make one comment? One comment. I want to commend Commissioner Moore at the T D C meeting for bringing up Dr. Kirk, as well as Congressman Bill Ruckus and Mr. Dempsey for the great work they've done. I thought it was a total class act recognizing those people, the great work they did for Pasco, so kudos to you.
Thank you, very good. We all send that wish to you.
The power of person.
Good job done, good job by staff and all, so. I have one thing, it's come to my attention that in Pasco County, if we don't start looking out for what we're getting built in our county in large developments, and if we don't start watching it closer, then we'll have developed land for houses that'll just be houses. And I think what we all really want for our county is to have developed land that becomes a community for each project that we have going forth. One that has architectural design in it, one that has better landscaping, and just the fact that a builder that wants to be a part of our community and build for our community for the future, we need to have a better product. Because it's come to my attention, and I think you've heard Commissioner Starkey, and I think others have said it, that there's areas in our county that we've gotten housing developments, whether they're small or large, that are really not up to what we really need for our county, to be a premier county. We need better than that. So I would like to see us, and I've gone over, there's a new bill coming out from the state, but I think we're okay if we make some conditions that will make it better for our county on M P U Ds and make them be much more a community in Pasco than what we've seen in the past. And I'm not saying there's ones in the past, all of them are bad, some of them are great, some of them are so-so, but there's some that I've seen lately, and Commissioner Starkey brought them up, showed us a picture, when you look down a road and you see concrete sidewalk, concrete driveway, and houses either all the same color or just bland, that you looked at it with no landscaping, there's something wrong with us developing that kind of product, and we need better than that in our community. And so I charge y'all, I charge the staff, Mr. Biles, to bring something forward to us that will improve that look of Pasco County. I plan on being here until my last days. I don't want to see some of the product I've seen that's terrible-looking and not a good community for people to live in. We want the best for our folks that live in Pasco and work here and play and do all the things that we fight to have done the right way. We need homes and communities built inside our county that will show that same view. So please, if you will, Mr. Biles, with some direction to staff and all that, please bring that to us sooner than later, because we have a lot of projects. I don't want to just push houses, because when you push just houses, you forget it's a live community, and it just needs to look better. We all want to live in a better place, and it looks better. I mean, we don't want to live a place where you don't have any landscaping or the architect, I mean, it just takes away from where you live. So we need better than that. And I know, and there's other places that are building some affordable housing, some places, some areas, and we've gotten some, I know, Date City's putting up a couple of affordable housing apartments in Date City, and some other areas have those too, but we still, we need those too, because all of our citizens, forty percent of our citizens need something better, and we ought to be able to guide it and let it be better for the future. And so all I do is ask you to do your best job you can, and let's become a very premier county in the future, from this day forward. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Well, we gotta read the emails.
Oh, excuse me, I won't adjourn. With that, I will turn it over to our clerk, because she has about twelve or thirteen emails to read into the record at this time.
Mr. Chairman, could I, let me respond to you real quick, and I appreciate, no, I appreciate your comments and stuff, and I think when we talk about that and some of the things I've... and some of the things I've brought up in the past, especially when we talk about that fifty-four, fifty-six corridor and what we're seeing, and, and again, I appreciate the temporary moratorium that was in place now, but again, let's be very conscious, like you just mentioned, of what goes, as, just as you, is what I hear too, and I see it every day, of jumping off fifty-six and seventy-five. That's not what we want to continue to see, and that's not what we want to continue to happen, you know, in those areas. So yes, we have to be very, very conscious of moving forward of what's going on, because that is highly concerning. So I don't disagree with points, and I, and I would ask at the same time to be very, let's be very conscious of that corridor that I've been speaking of, because it's very important moving forward. I know there were some approvals that I did not like and denied and didn't appreciate that move forward, but we'll move, let's look towards the future, and let's be very conscious of things that we do approve along that corridor in the future, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just on that point.
Mr. Steinstein?
So what you're really asking for is amendments to the Land Development Code so that this would be applied universally to MPUD projects.
Right.
Single family primarily. Um, but while Pasco has traditionally taken, taken the approach of a conceptual MPUD plan, you, I think the board may be looking for a little more detail, a little more permanency to that plan.
Right.
And some regulation that creates a community versus a subdivision.
Right, exactly.
Or spot zoning, multifamily.
No, it's, uh, basically, it's only MPUDs and residential, um, multifamily pretty well, it seems like they, they take care of their grounds around those very well and use buffers and, and do it, I think they do a pretty good job. I've seen some residential areas that are just absolutely terrible. Uh, and, and they're supposed to be new, and I can tell you, they don't look new. They look like they're about to fall apart, some of them.
But on the, but on the multifamily.
On multifamily.
On multifamily, uh, the, the moratorium you have put in place is going to be looking at those sorts of things, I would think as well.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, we want to make sure that.
So that those projects could run in tandem with one another.
Right.
Right.
So they blend in without, uh, being eyesore for one another.
Mm-hmm. I forgot this earlier, by the way. Team up, team up, Pasco, Sports Coast.
Okay.
Show that to everybody.
All right.
Number one.
All right, that, um, Madam Clerk?
Yes. There are twenty-two emails. There are some that are duplicates that are left, so a total of nineteen emails.
Okay. That grew while we were sitting here.
All right, so we have an email from Sergio Palazzi and Andrea Mofante. Both addresses are five four two two Jobeth Drive. This is their email. Dear resident, uh, let me see. That includes the email to them, so I'm not going to read the Dear Residents of Gulf Landings. So Dear Pasco County Commissioners, so in fact, there are five that are duplicate, because I didn't realize that, so I'll go ahead and read the other three names and addresses, and they're all the same.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Barry Fassen or Fason, six two zero eight Spoonbill Drive, Newport Richie, Florida, three four six five two. Mark and Tina Emerson, five 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 seven Sea Forest Drive, number two fourteen, Newport Richie, Florida, three four six five two. And finally, J.W. and Beth Bailey, five seven two seven Biscayne Court, number one oh I request Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, B O C C, add an amendment and approval by the Board of County, Board of County Commissioners to include all the canals and waterways in the Sea Forest area, which includes Gulf Landings Association, to be included in the Phase Two permitting that is scheduled for May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, B O C C meeting. I request my email be read into and entered into the record of the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one Board of County Commissioners meeting, sincerely. Right, and the rest are individual emails. Barry Jackson at six one four six Bayside Drive, Newport Richie, Florida, three four six five two. I respectfully request Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, B O C C, to add an amendment and to approve. Looks like this is the same Phase Two permitting scheduled for the five eighteen twenty-one B O C C meeting and inclusion of all canals and waterways in the Sea Forest area, which includes those of Gulf Landing Association. I also request that my email be read into the record, sincerely. William Von Vecchiden, Vecchiden, nine eight two three San Sebastian Way, Port Ritchie, Florida, three four six six eight. The canals need to be dredged because as sediment builds up on the bottom of the waterway, it reduces the depth of the water. Dredging strips away the accumulated debris, which can restore the body, the water body to its original depth and reduce the risk of flooding. John Elms, nine nine zero two San Sebastian Way, Port Ritchie. I ask the County Commissioners to approve the expense to have our canals dredged. Such action will contribute to the continuing lifestyle and economic vitality, i.e. property values and resulting tax bases that Pasco County and its citizens enjoy. Kind regards. Kevin and Melissa Schrader. Good morning, week. Kevin and Melissa Schrader of nine eight three one Island Harbor Drive, Port Ritchie, Florida, three four six six eight. Want this read into the record during the May eighteenth B O C C meeting. We would like to see our canal, canals dredged in the area, making passage out of the Gulf of Mexico easier at low tide. While new to the area and anxious to purchase a boat, we understand from neighbors that certain canals are limited in depth, so we have held off on this purchase. While we love this, love the area and neighbors, had we known the canal passage was so difficult, we may have looked in a different area to live. We are concerned as to what this problem may have, have on our property values as well. Please address the dredging of the canals immediately. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sherry Vander Galien. Um, I am requesting, I don't see an, uh, an address. I'm requesting that the Westport canals be dredged for safety reasons and due to the smells coming from this area. There are times when the smell in this area is overwhelming, and we are forced to breathe this in. We have been stranded in this area on our boat, and a day of fun turns into a nightmare real fast. A four to six hour boating trip can become a ten to twelve hour trip due to the shallow, shallowness of these canals. And if you have a medical condition, diabetes, heart disease, et cetera, you can find yourself in an emergency situation that will not end. These canals need to be made deeper so boaters are safe to exit and enter in their respective homes, sincerely. James and Amara Don Mills, nine eight three five San Diego Way, Port Ritchie, Florida, three four six six eight. I, James Mills, want this read into the record during the May eighteenth twenty, the May eighteenth B O C C meeting. As a resident of Westport subdivision for twenty years, I and other residents have struggled to clear sand and rocks from our only route from our home to the Gulf. I, among others, have spent countless, I'm sorry, I and others have spent hours grounded day and night if returning at other than high tide and have suffered boat and motor damage. Residents regularly enter the water to dive and remove rocks and sand and place, place and replace PVC path markers at our residents' expense. We are supportive of any level of channel clearing assistance available. Uh, next is Grant Reel. I do not see an address. I, Grant Reel, want this email read into the record during the May eighteenth B O C C meeting. Please consider the dredging of the Westport canals to begin the planning process for twenty twenty-one. As a resident and speaking on behalf of many of my neighbors, the dredging of the canals will greatly improve access to the Gulf of Mexico. The majority of the residents with Westport canal access are senior with limited access to local beaches and attractions. We rely on canals as our only means of getting away to enjoy with friends and family in today's society of COVID-nineteen, and fear that what the future holds dredging the canal is vital to our well-being. All of us would benefit by improving access through dredging. Currently, we are dependent of the tides contributing to a narrow window to be able to navigate. This window is greatly lessened during the winter months when access is almost impossible. Dredging would open up that window and allow for more versatility for enjoying the water. In addition, there is a safety factor. The shallowness of the, of the canals makes the only safe passage at high tide, which is very narrow. Any other time, we risk damage to our boats and possibly injury to our family and friends that are with us. Dredging would greatly reduce the risk factor of possibly hitting bottom or other obstacles to both the boat, but more importantly, the safety of our family and friends. Improving the navigation of the canal through dredging will positively impact property values and draw in new residents while adding to the local economy. Currently, we are limited to the size of the boat and stray away from new boat purchases in fear of damage while navigating through shallow canal systems. Dredging the canal would open this up, allowing the increased sale at local mariners, uh, local marinas. Overall, please consider this input as a contributing factor in the Westport Canal dredging discussion. This is a win-win for everyone. The residents benefit by safe access and expanded access to the Gulf. Housing values will increase attracting new residents to invest in the neighborhood, and the county benefits through increased property values. Dredging will impact not only today's residents of Westport, but also residents for many years to come. Thank you for the opportunity to share my input. This email is from Ryan Jessup. Uh, no email, I mean, sorry, no address. I would like to see our canals dredged for a couple of reasons. If you've ever taken a boat out onto a lake, river, or canal, you know you have to be careful to navigate around the amount of much in the, of the water body. Much is comprised of sediments at the bottom of the body of water. The more muck the water has, the greater impact it will have on the quality of the water and the recreational activities that take place there. Dredging is vital in maintaining the health, recreational enjoyment, and quality of a canal. The long-term benefits are crucial to its survival. Tom and Linda Howwell, five seven four nine Seabreeze Drive, Port Ritchie. We are Westport residents and live in the water. We choose to purch, we chose to purchase the home in two thousand seventeen at a premium based on information provided at the time of the sale that a dredging project was approved and imminent, but would, would dredge the canal and local canals, I'm sorry, dredge the channel and local canals to retain, improve the navigability that the waterfront residents of this neighborhood have paid for. However, the canals and men, and main channel to the Gulf continues to fill with silt, rocks, and other debris and are now in total disrepair. The main channel markers and signs are mostly missing and are no longer accurate based on how the surface has changed over the years. Additionally, the, the can, the can, woo, the canals in our neighborhood have also been neglected. These canals continue to shrink due to naturally occurring subsurface growth, which makes boating unsafe and will continue to get worse over time. We have seen our canal in four short years be drastically reduced with respect to safe navigable water. We are forced to be tide-dependent and can only safely enjoy the use of even the smallest of boats during a few hour high tide period, or risk serious damage to boat or not being able to navigate in and out at all. Recently, a family with small children on an eighteen-foot boat was struck, it was stuck in the canal, was stuck in the channel, having inadvertently beached in shallow water for six hours until after midnight so that they could safely come back into the neighborhood. Our canal specifically ends at San Diego Way and Seabreeze Drive and has become a repository of sediment, sledge, garbage, and other debris. It has also become home to alligators with numerous baby gators who reside at the end of the canal where the water is shallow. The stench and flies during low tide make it difficult to enjoy outdoor life. The county, the state, and federal government are or should be required to provide maintenance of the waterways, the, the channel and markers and the canal. We have already sold our twenty-foot V-hull and have removed and have moved to a pontoon boat, which requires less draft in an attempt to compensate for the deteriorating channels, uh, channels and canals. Many people have incurred damage, expense, and hardships as a result of a lack of maintenance. Yet our tax, our taxes continue to increase significantly for the privilege, privilege of living in the water in a boating community. The significant decline we have witnessed these past four years at current rate, it will only be a few more years until we cannot leave our channel at all, I'm sorry, our canal at all. It is not the waterfront life we bought into and continue to pay for. We ask you to do the right thing for the Westport taxpayers and assist with making the Westport community the boating community it should be and once was. Shannon Waitrek, Waitrek, nine nine three one San Sebastian Way, Port Ritchie, Florida, three four six six eight. I don't see an address. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I just read the address. Woo, getting tired. Please consider Westport subdivision for dredging as a waterfront homeowner. I'm concerned about flooding, potential erosion, wildlife preservation, ecosystem maintenance, property valuation, and overall safety in our community. Dredging would not only be beneficial to our neighborhood, but the adjacent Warner Bryce, Salt Springs State Park, and nearby areas. Let's all do our part and take care of our water before it's too late to enjoy it anymore. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
You're doing pretty good.
All right. Okay. Jason and Heidi Whipke, six seven one Adrian Wood Drive, Holly Hudson, boo, Hudson, Florida, three four six six seven. Uh, Dear Jack Mariano, we are inquiring about the fact that we have received a warning for using our newly purchased home in November twenty twenty as a short-term weekly vacation rental. The fine is five hundred dollars per day if rented out as a weekly rental again. We are most certainly willing to become compliant with the laws of Pasco County. However, we, when we called the county permitting department and spoke with Ruth Ann, she assured us that it is virtually impossible to obtain a, the permit. As only sixteen permits are in place, we also spoke with a real estate attorney who told us the same thing. Apparently, this permit has been put into place as a nineteen ninety-nine. Obviously, things have changed in the past twenty-two years, and VRBO, Airbnb, and such vacation rental sites have created a new way of vacationing. In times like these, most people are more, more comfortable vacationing in a home rather than a hotel or resort where there are several people gathering together and utilizing elevators and pools. When we purchased this home, the previous owners had also been using this method to rent the home on a weekly basis, and we continued to follow suit. It was our misunderstanding of the need for a permit, and he did not already have this permit as a previous renter. The Realtor that sold us the house was not aware of this permit either. When, with renting it out a few times, we did collect hotel taxes and paid them to the state and county as required. As we have researched on VRBO, Airbnb, and many other rental sites, there are well over a thousand short-term vacation rentals currently being rented in Pasco County. Ruth Ann in the permitting department informed us that there are currently only sixteen permits in Pasco County. How can there be so many weekly short-term rentals without permits? The process to apply for the permit includes getting fifty-one percent of your subdivisions to agree to allow the property to be permitted. As we all know, many homes here in Pasco County are not only second homes for the property owners, but also short-term rentals. In order to get these signatures, it's virtually possible to track down the owners, let alone get a response from them. We are most certain that most of these one thousand-plus properties would be up for sale if this permit continues to be in place and not easily obtainable. We would like to request that there be a permit that is in place and charge a fee each year to renew. It would be ideal to have a drive-by inspection and proof of hotel taxes being paid in order to renew. Pasco County has many homes, as we are all aware of, but while driving through the county, we have noticed many homes that have not been taken care of over several years. Some homes have become an eyesore to the community. I can assure you that any property being used as a short-term rental is always well-maintained and looked, and looking its best. When renting to vacationers, the appearance of the property will always be kept up, as in grass and landscaping will be pristine, garbage picked up, appearance and maintenance of the property will be top priority. We believe the offering a weekly rental not only allows people to visit the area and frequent the businesses that have suffered from COVID-nineteen, but perhaps draw more interest in purchasing the many houses that come up for sale as a homestead. Pasco County is a beautiful area. Why not allow weekly rental permits to keep the economy growing, create more jobs, and collect more taxes of the county? That's the three-minute mark. Okay. Alberto Martinez Caraballo. Let's see. I do not see an address. Oh, here it is. Five nine one five Sea Ranch Drive, Unit six oh three Hudson, Florida, three Five nine one five Sea Ranch Drive, Unit 603, Hudson, Florida, three four six six seven. I'm here to express my opinion in regards to any rulings on vacation rentals. Vacation rentals is my only source of income for the past four years, and I need to make sure there are no restrictions added to how we manage and the freedom to openly book rentals. Without the ability to rent freely and by limiting imputation days restrictions, it will impair my ability to sustain myself, eliminating two salaries as well as the taxes that today we pay to the state and federal tax. It is my opinion to allow us, vacation rental owners, to continue promoting our business without limiting the days of stay and allowing tourists to continue to come, enjoy our beaches, and inducing tourism funds by spending in Florida businesses, helping boost Florida's economy. I kindly ask for my request to be heard, ensuring that the future of these small businesses, which also contributes to the tourism industries and the health of Florida's economy. Thank you for considering my request. Badress Patel, address is six zero three five Sea Ranch Drive, Unit 103, Hudson, Florida, three four six six seven. I own properties in Pasco County. I am in support of vacation rentals and supporting that. The idea of requiring the signed petition only divides residents of communities and virtually makes it impossible for most owners to get the required Pasco license, while they can easily obtain the required State of Florida occupation license, the Department of Revenue license, and the Pasco County tourist development tax license. Not allowing this industry to operate will cost Pasco County hundreds of thousands of dollars in lost revenue. Please voice my opinion in a meeting tomorrow to eliminate fifty-one percent vote in communities to allow vacation rentals. Thank you so much for listening to us. Donald Vander Galien. I, Donald Vander Galien, want this email read into the record during the May eighteenth B.O.C.C. meeting because of the canals being so low in Westport, you can only get in and out during mid and high tide. When we bought our property a year ago, we were not aware of the canal situation. Had we known this would, that this, we would have not brought, bought the property. As I am an avid fisherman, we have experienced being stuck out in the Gulf for hours on end due to these canals being so low. This is a very dangerous situation for individuals who have medical needs, i.e. insulin-dependent oral medications, and that saying, a day out fishing is better than a day at work, not if you live in Westport. Please dredge these canals so everyone can be safe and have an enjoyable day on the Gulf. No email was, or no address was provided. Kimberly, I'll spell the last name, L.E.C.H.L.E.I.T.N.E.R., no address. I am strongly urging the county commissioners to act and get our canals dredged to a usable depth. The canals going into Westport are less than one foot of water during the low-tide cycle and cannot be used. I'm urging your action on this important issue as it will affect our property values in the near future. Thank you. Joel Rayburn, nine nine one six Trade Winds Drive, Port Ritchie, Florida, three four six six eight. As a resident of Westport subdivision in Port Ritchie, I would like to see our channel leading to the Gulf of Mexico properly dredged. The channel has never been dredged, while neighboring channels have been done multiple times. Over the past several years, we have seen inflexing kayaks, paddleboards, and other small vessels exploring the conservation area around the channel. The current path and configuration of this channel poses significant safety risks to all who enjoy this area. The channel is very winding with blind spots and is not wide enough for two vessels to safely pass. Dredging this channel will not only improve safety for everyone, but will also improve water circulation within the conservation area to help maintain the health of our ecosystem. I strongly recommend reconfiguring dredging Westport Channel to mitigate any safety risks to powdered, powered, and non-powered vessels, as well as wildlife in this area. Okay, last email. Don't have an address. It's from, we, William and Valerie Romancheck, want this email read into the record during the May eighteenth B.O.C.C. meeting. We want the Westport Canal dredged so we can use our boat all year long, not just during summer months when tides are higher. During winter months, the tides are often so low, it is impossible to get, to get our boat out. We bought our house in order to use our boat and have been hearing about the dredging of our canals for years, but with no action. Would very much appreciate your attention to this matter. That's it.
That's it?
Thank you.
Okay. You ready?
I'm done.
With that, we will adjourn the meeting today.